Ladies ready? All right. Well, good morning. We're going to go ahead and call to order the meeting of the Plastra County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, October the 6th. I appreciate everybody accommodating a little earlier start time this morning. We have a number of closed session items that I thought are important for our board to have an opportunity to discuss prior to taking up all of our regular agenda items. So that's why the 8:30 start time this morning. So we are just going to have a flag salute this morning and then our board is going to go into closed session and then we'll come back at nine o'clock, thereabouts, and begin as we normally do with public comment and all that stuff. That will be at nine after we come back from closed session. So if you will, please join us in a flag salute led by Supervisor Duran.
My flag is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now County Council, if you will, please take us into closed session.
The board will now adjourn to closed session to discuss the items listed on page one of the agenda and also the supplemental item. The items are five items of litigation, Gomez, Tovar, Harrison, and Akey, one item of anticipated litigation, and an item of Republican employee appointment.
All right. And with that, we'll go ahead in closed session and expect to start our regular session about nine o'clock. Thank you.[109.14]
And so at this point, that's the entirety of our report out from closed session. We did not complete all of our items. So after our items of our regular agenda are completed, we'll be going back into closed session to take up some additional items. We already had our flag salute, so we will move right to our statement of meeting procedures.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of October 6, 2015. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such, and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. Keep in mind that the chairman has the discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all cell phones be turned off or put in silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you very much. Okay, consent calendar, any items on consent that board members wish to have removed for discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to remove item 22A.
22A, all right. We will pull 22A for presentation individually. Any other items on consent that any members of the board want to have removed? See, none, any member of the public wished to have a consent item removed for discussion. Okay, do we have a...
Second.
I have a motion, Duran, a second, Holmes, to adopt the remainder of the consent calendar. Can we have a roll call, please?
Duran?
Yes.
Wygant?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Euler?
Aye, thank you very much. Okay, this is the time for public comment, when any member of the public can address the board on any item that is not on the agenda, knowing that the board cannot take action on items raised under public comment. If you wish to address the board, please try to keep your comments, well, please identify yourself for us, and then try to keep your comments to three minutes. Any members of the public wish to address the board, this would be the time to do it.
Good morning, my name is Doug Tatarra. I live at 102 Sandberg Court in Roseville. I have some remarks I'd like to share with you this morning. I was one of only two respondents to your RFP 10-443, seeking a new Placer County Fairgrounds operator. The two proposals were rejected, and the RFP was canceled. Staff reported at your last meeting that 772 firms were noticed, 45 firms downloaded the RFP documents, and only two responded. That should tell you something. Recently, I sent all of you a letter stating my concerns regarding this RFP process, and how it was a flawed document and committee effort from the start. Since it appears the county is unwilling to fund operations to sustain the fairgrounds, the decision was made to seek out a private sector entity through this RFP. Your consultants' report recommended this new entity make a proposed $1.4 million investment to address deferred maintenance, add improvements, and rebrand the facility. No firm is willing to make this investment in an aging facility which is functionally obsolete, economically unviable, and saddled with accounting irregularities, speedway noise issues, and poor access. This fact was proven by the lack of responses to your RFP. With declining attendance and revenue at the fairgrounds, it should be clear to you by now that the time has come to shut down the fairgrounds and plan for redevelopment of the site and subsequent relocation. May I suggest you reach out to the United Auburn Indian Community and ask for their financial support and/or land donation for a new fairground site on Athens across from the casino. You have in your possession a site plan I created that shows what a new fairgrounds would look like on that site. It is a common sense layout, which includes all the elements of the existing site and more. This would be an economic win-win for Placer County and the UAIC. The facility would become a landmark attraction for South Placer County residents and tourists. Alternatively, you may want to reach out to former Congressman Doug Osie, who I spoke to last week. He was not one of the 772 who were noticed about the RFP, despite the fact that he currently operates Gibson Ranch on a 10-year lease with Sacramento County. I cannot speak on behalf of Mr. Osie, however, he is someone with the financial resources, real estate expertise, facility operations expertise, and political skills needed to take on this project. I stand ready to assist you in any way I can. I am, however, a bit dismayed to learn that another potential bidder has surfaced after the RFP was canceled, and the county is negotiating directly with this firm. There is only one prudent course to take at this time. Take my plan seriously, and allow me the opportunity to lead the effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tarr. Appreciate you. Anybody else wish to address the board on a public comment? Okay, move on to supervisor committee reports. Any supervisors have anything they want to report out? All right, then we will jump right into our 9:10 timed item. This is, we have two recognitions this morning, one of Tammy Harris and the other of Richard Easterling. So why don't we ask them both to go ahead and come forward, because I think that'd even make for an even better photo when we're all done with all this, to have them both up here together. And I will read through both commendations prior to presenting. We'll begin with Tammy's, retiring from Placer County after serving the sheriff's office for 37 years? We aggressively recruit in the third grade, obviously. Whereas Tammy began her employment as a temporary typist clerk through the SETA school program in '78, and transitioned to full-time employment, worked as a typist clerk in the jail and records and payroll units before becoming an evidence technician. Her dedication to the office of sheriff and the citizens of the community has been exemplary. Her hard work, dedication, and desire to excel led to her promotion to supervising evidence technician, where her exceptional leadership and supervisory abilities kept her unit functioning at a high level. In 2014, she received the prestigious George Pletz Meritorious Service Award, presented by the California State Division of International Association for Identification, and for her exceptional professional standards in employment. Tammy continued to research and train in her chosen field, broadening her knowledge and honing her skills in crime scene investigation. She's performed with unfailing professionalism and conscientious attention to duty throughout her career. Let it now therefore be known that the above commendation was duly passed by our Board of Supervisors on this day, October 6. On behalf of the citizens of Placer County, and acknowledge with great appreciation Tammy's exceptional service, and wish her well in her retirement and future pursuits. So Tammy, anything you want to say before I get on to reading the other one?
Just that it's been my honor and privilege to work here for those 37 years. I never imagined the county and the technology changing in the way that it did, but it's been a great career, and now I look forward to the rest of my life in retirement.
Good. Now, you understand that after I read this next one, I'm going to ask under Sheriff Bell if he will come forward and say a few words on behalf of the department. And so are there any preemptive strikes you'd like to get in? Prior to hearing from him, are you willing to sit back and just respond in kind?
How much time do I have?
Yeah, today's not a good day for that. Okay. Mr. Easterling, good morning.
Morning.
So whereas Richard Easterling is retiring from the county of Placer, offices sheriff after serving that agency and the citizens of the county for 31 years, Richard began his employment in 1984, served the majority of his career as a correctional officer, too, in the jail division, where his professional demeanor served him well when dealing with inmates. Also suits you well for standing in front of us. Richard's dedication to the office of sheriff and to the citizens of the community has been exemplary. He has served as a jail training officer, has been a member of the jail gang unit, jail search team. His vast knowledge of corrections made him a valued member of the South Placer Adult Correctional Facility Design Team. Richard has a high level of expertise that he readily shares with his coworkers. He's appreciated by his supervisors, well-liked by his coworkers, and respected by inmates. He's a valued member of Squad One Knights and an asset to the Placer County Sheriff's Office. Richard has performed with unfailing professionalism and conscientious attention to duty throughout his career. Therefore, let it be known that the above commendation was, in fact, duly passed by our Board of Supervisors on this date, October 6. On behalf of the citizens of Placer County, and acknowledge with great appreciation Richard's exceptional service, and wish him well in his retirement and future pursuits. Richard, anything you'd like to say in rebuttal or in advance of under Sheriff Bell getting up?
I want to thank all of you, and thank all my teachers. I've learned from everybody, and we all contribute to each other, and I'm looking forward to retirement. Thank you again.
Thank you. Mr. Bell, would you please, on behalf of your department, all those assembled here who are wearing sidearms?
The 37 years kind of threw me for a bit of a loose cow. Between her and Dave, and I think Dave did a similar number of years, but he looks like he did those number of years.
I did a chance to read that.
Open comment is passed. Richard, when I, when I joined the organization in 1992, I started on Squad One Knights, and Richard was there. And then when I promoted to sergeant, I inherited Squad One Knights, and Richard was there. And it's going to be hard, I think, for all the correctional officers and deputy sheriffs who work the facility, and even our outside agencies who have seen Richard in booking, to imagine the facility without him being there. So I, my suspicion is, he says he's ready to retire. I've heard rumors and rumbles that he may want to come back and do little things here and there for us, and I'm certain that we can welcome him back for that. And as far as Tammy goes, she has been the heart and soul of our evidence unit through some, some big cases and little cases, and it's always been about outstanding professionalism and service. And both these two people are absolutely wonderful. And as it is, somebody will succeed both of them, but nobody will ever replace them. So I just want to say thank you to them well.
Thank you, thank you, Devin. And stay there, because I want you in the picture as well, but just on behalf of our board, 68 combined years of incredible service to Placer County, our residents. And, you know, while we as county supervisors do, from time to time, when we're wandering through railies or any other place, while we do get comments from our citizens about why isn't that road done and all the rest, we also get a lot of, a lot of praise that we hear about Placer County and the level of service that is provided here in Placer County. And we know, and we express to our constituents, that it's only because of the great people that we've been able to hire and retain who provide that level of service. So on behalf of our board, I want to thank you for your combined 68 years, and everybody else in this room, who day in and day out just, just continues delivering a high level of service to the people of Placer County. So thank you very much. All right, thank you. All right, thank you all very much for that. We will move on to our 9:15 timed item, a facility services item. This is a public hearing regarding a sewer, SMD-1 annexation, and so I will turn it over to staff to proceed.
Good morning, Chairman Euler, members of your board. I'm Kevin Bell, the Environmental Engineering Program Manager with Department of Public Works and Facilities, and I'm here with Andy Darrow, who's a senior civil engineer.
Thanks, Kevin. Good morning, Chairman Euler, members of the board. I'm here to request that your board hold a public hearing to consider annexation of parcel number 054190006000 in the Sewer Maintenance District Number 1. The property is located on Hammond Drive in the North Auburn area. James Johnson is requesting annexation of the 4.91 acre parcel in order to connect to public sewer. If approved, the applicant will be required to pay the annexation fee in effect at the time they choose to make payment, as well as a $300 recording fee paid to the State Board of Equalization. The current annexation fee is $6,344. Staff supports this request. In order to move forward, I request that your board hold a public In order to move forward, I request that your board hold a public hearing and at the end of that hearing, adopt the resolution in the staff report to annex parcel number zero-five-four-one-nine-zero-zero-zero-six-zero-zero-zero in the Sewer Maintenance District One. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Prior to the public hearing, board members have any questions? Seeing no questions, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. Any members of the public wish to address the board? We will close the public hearing, come back to the board for action. The motion Duran, second Holmes, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none? Thank you very much. All right. Yeah, we can do that. At this time, we're going to go ahead and adjourn as Placer County Board of Supervisors and convene as the Placer County Public Housing Authority to take up item number four.
Good morning, Chairman Euler.
There you go. They took it for you.
Got it? Hey, good morning. I'm Linda Patterson. I'm the Director of the Human Services Division. However, today, I'm in my role as the Director of the Housing Authority. I come before you today to request that you adopt a resolution to authorize the Director of the Housing, Placer County Housing Authority, to enter into a cooperative agreement with the California Affordable Housing Agency. So the California Affordable Housing Agency is a joint powers agreement that consists of seventeen California housing authorities located throughout California. And what they are looking to do here is to be authorized through cooperative agreement with our housing authority to issue bonds, sell revenues for the purpose of financing multifamily rental housing facilities and to purchase single-family housing units located within, you know, our county. What they want to do is operate a, what they call a trio leasing program under the Act to acquire single-family housing units for the purpose of developing home ownership. It's kind of a lease-to-own proposition throughout the county. To do so, they need authority from us through a cooperative agreement. What they have planned is to look at financing consumers that use a lease to own, kind of similar to a car leasing structure. The lease agreements can be one to five years and include features that help educate leases in becoming responsible and knowledgeable homeowners. They've done this in kind of neighboring counties, Sutter, Nevada, and they've been working to use the program to help transition families into home ownership. This is particularly helpful with, you know, some of the younger people that haven't established credit, people that are self-employed. This is a good way to ease them into home ownership. Their expectation is to finance over twenty homes this year and over three hundred homes next year, assuming average home value of three hundred fifty thousand. That's an investment of over a hundred twenty million in the next fifteen months in Placer County. And I have with me today Tom Lewis. He's back there in case we have further questions about this leasing program. He's the general counsel for the California Affordable Housing Agency.
Okay. Board members have questions at this time, Supervisor Duran?
Yeah. I'm just curious, have you ran the organization's per forma finances? Has that all been analyzed by county council or the respective agency here with the county?
I'm not sure that they've looked at that part. We did, of course, run this by county council. They do have a successful track record in working in neighboring counties and seventeen other counties as well. I do know that my boss has had dealings with them in Nevada County, so they do have a good reputation.
Okay. Thank you.
So my question is in regard to the acquisition of the homes in the first place. How are the homes identified? We're never, we're always talking about willing seller opportunities here. There's never any kind of eminent domain usage or anything like that in order to acquire the properties. I just want, if you wouldn't mind, please first identify yourself for the record, if you would, please.
Thank you. I'm Tom Lewis. I'm general counsel for the California Affordable Housing Agency.
Great, Tom. If you could just kind of describe the process of how...
The process that we're working on is to work with new home developers who always end up with an inventory of homes that they can't get buyers qualified for. And then we would work with those developers on that ten-twenty percent and we would locate buyers or lessees who maybe have some credit issues. The properties would be obtained with an FHA mortgage by CalHA held and then it would be assumable by the lesssee once their credit issues were, you know, solved so that they could transition from a lease into home ownership.
Sure. Okay. So this is, these are new homes, new construction. This isn't going out and finding homes and doing a traditional flip type of a model. This is all interesting.
No.
Interesting model. I hadn't heard of that. Okay. Thank you. That was the only question I had. Any members of the public have any questions prior to the board considering this item? And seeing none, it's pleasure the board.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion Holmes, second Montgomery, to adopt the resolution authorizing the Director of the Housing Authority to enter into the cooperative agreement with the California Affordable Housing Agency. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? Thank you so much. All right. We'll go ahead and adjourn as the Placer County Public Housing Authority, reconvene as the Placer County Board of Supervisors, and thank Mr. Bosch for reminding me about Supervisor Holmes's item that we removed from consent, item twenty-two A. Supervisor Holmes?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think we can squeeze this in in the next few minutes. This is a matter of a proclamation declaring October twenty-fifteen as White Canes Safety Awareness Month and October fifteenth, twenty-fifteen as White Canes Safety Awareness Day. I see Michelle Cowan and her partner there. Could you come forward? She's with the Center for the Visually Impaired, right?
Yes, it's the Center for Visually Impaired Adults.
Adults, okay.
CVIA.
All right. Well, I'm going to read this. Whereas white canes are designed to be used as mobility devices and can dramatically improve the independence of individuals who utilize them, a white cane also signals to the community as a whole that the individual is a person who is blind or otherwise visually impaired. Individuals using a white cane are able to achieve greater independence and gain self-confidence with the use of a white cane. And whereas California's white cane law states that only a person who is totally or partially blind may carry a predominantly white cane and that pedestrians using a white cane or guide dog have the right of way. Drivers of vehicles approaching the pedestrian must yield or take reasonably necessary precautions to avoid injury to a blind person. And whereas White Cane Awareness Month is also a time of special significance for the visually impaired community. It celebrates a greater freedom or independence and presents an opportunity for the sighted community with an opportunity to gain further understanding that individuals with visual impairments are capable of being integral members of the community. Just like their neighbors, Americans with disabilities expect to live full and productive lives. Now therefore, it be proclaimed that the Placer County Board of Supervisors does hereby declare October twenty-fifteen as White Cane Safety Awareness Month and October fifteenth, twenty-fifteen as White Cane Safety Awareness Day in Placer County. I'll bring this down to you. Are there any Lions members here? Because, you know, they're the ones that, you know, break through the glasses. Be nice for a Lions member to get a little publicity for us.
No Lions. Hunting down gazelles.
I'm sorry, I don't know the name of your...
This is Nikki.
Hi, Nikki. Thanks for being here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Holmes.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll take up our nine-thirty timed item now. This is our CAL FIRE contract amendment to the fiscal year fifteen sixteen Fire Protection Services Agreement. John, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Euler, board members. My name's John McElhany, Emergency Services Program Manager. Today, I ask you to adopt a resolution approving the CAL FIRE Department of Forestry and Fire Protection Cooperative Fire Protection Agreement, otherwise known as the CAL FIRE Contract, for fiscal year two thousand fifteen sixteen in the amount of ten million, one hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars. This will supersede and replace Resolution two-zero-one-five-dash-one-two-seven, which your board adopted on June sixteenth, two thousand fifteen. Additionally, I'm asking you to approve two budget revisions in the total combined amount of five hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars for an increase in the CAL FIRE Cooperative Fire Protection Agreement for two thousand fifteen and sixteen. By way of background, as you may recall, on June sixteenth of this year, your board approved the previous fifteen sixteen CAL FIRE agreement in the amount of nine million, six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars. These revisions are going to be able to allow us to adjust the agreement to ten million, one seventy-five, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars, which will allow for full funding of Fire Station one-eighty-two in Ofer and the addition of one fire planner within the contract. In terms of fiscal impact, these two budget revisions have no impact on the general fund. Funding for Fire Station one-eighty-two in Ofer comes from reserves in the amount of approximately four hundred and ten thousand dollars and is included in the final budget. Funding for one additional fire planner comes from the Fire Protection Fund in the amount of approximately a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Unless you have any questions, I'm pretty much done. I also have Chief Morris to answer any detailed technical questions as well.
All right. Board members have any questions on the proposed revisions? Supervisor Montgomery?
No questions. I just want to thank you and Chief Morris for continuing to work on this issue and I want to thank my board as well for recognizing the importance of funding this sort of level of fire service in Placer County and also really call out, although you already said it again, that the importance of the recognizing that we are using reserves here for this particular fund. And there is a longer-term problem looming in front of us, but hopefully with the fire planning that we're doing with our partner agencies, we'll get to a resolution before our funds run dry. So thank you very much.
You're welcome, ma'am.
All right. Supervisor Holmes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. John and George, thank you so much for working with us and this board as well. I appreciate your support, particularly for the Ofer Fire Station. The residents out there, we're really getting kind of nervous about closing that station, particularly in this drought year. And so I really appreciate the work you've done to make sure that that station is not closed and the residents out there will be very happy. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Any members of the public want to address the board on this item prior to taking action? Seeing none?
Second. Sorry. I'm sleeping.
That's all right. We have a motion, motion Holmes, second Montgomery, to approve items five, A, one, and two. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Duran?
Yes.
Wigan?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Euler?
Aye. Okay. Have a couple of minutes before our ten forty, thank you, John, our ten forty-five timed items. So we'll go ahead to our first regular department item and that'll be Administrative Services procurement regarding the Beacon Hill Emergency Communications Tower Facility.
There you go.
All right, there you go. Missed the button. Good morning, Chairman Euler and members of the board. I'm Dieter Wittenberg, Information Technology Manager with the Telecommunications Division. I'm here today seeking your board's approval to execute a contract with Burco Constructors, Inc. of Loomis, California, for the development of the Beacon Hill Emergency Communications Tower Facility in the amount of five hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars and to gain approval to take additional action necessary to gain site acquisition and bid solicitation for the site development supporting emergency communication tower facilities in the Tahoe Basin. Let me begin by providing some background and updates. On February fourth, two thousand three, your board approved the countywide radio network strategic plan, which provided a solution for upgrading the existing county aging radio communication system. The countywide interoperable radio network project was designed to meet current and future public safety and service agency needs and is comprised of three operating zones: the west, the IAD corridor, and the Tahoe Basin. Since the project's inception, radio infrastructure has been deployed by operating zones based on operational priorities, funding availability, and cost-sharing opportunities. To date, the west zone is a hundred percent complete. The IAD corridor will be complete with the development of the Beacon Hill Emergency Communication Tower Facility. Currently, the Tahoe Basin Zone is fifteen percent complete and efforts to deploy the necessary communication infrastructure continue. Over two hundred and sixty users from non-public safety agencies such as transit, roads, parks, probation, district attorney, and animal control operate on the new radio network today. Efforts to migrate public safety agencies, including seven hundred-plus radios utilized by Placer County Sheriff's Office, will be one step closer with the completion of the Beacon Hill Emergency Communications Tower Facility. On May eleventh, two thousand fourteen, your board approved the necessary action to develop the Beacon Hill Emergency Communications Tower Facility and, sorry, in accordance with the Essential Services Act of nineteen eighty-six and Minor Use Permit two-zero-one-three-zero-zero-nine-six. The Beacon Hill Emergency Communications Tower Facility is located in Colfax, California, and will include a twelve-by-twenty shelter, a hundred and forty-foot lattice tower, backup generator, transfer switch, propane tank, my mic's not working, I don't believe. I'll have to talk to my team about that. And an access road to support the deployment of the Project Twenty-Five compliant digital trunking infrastructure. Right, I can speak loud, so. Community outreach efforts associated with this project included presentations to the Weimar Applegate Colfax Municipal Advisory Council and the Colfax City Council. Presentations included a description of the project and its public safety benefit. There was a healthy question-and-answer period at both meetings with council members and the public, which resulted in overall support of the project. During the Colfax City Council meeting, a request was made by a council member to include space on the proposed tower if a need arose in the future for SCADA or city communications. We agreed to include provisions as part of our minor use permit process in accordance with the project's cost-sharing methodologies. On August twelfth, two thousand fifteen, bid number one-zero-four-nine-two was released to identify qualified firms able to develop the Beacon Hill Emergency Communications Tower Facility. Fifty-three firms were notified of the bid, seventeen contractors downloaded the bid documents, and formal responses were received from two companies: Burco Constructors, Inc. of Loomis, California, and Quality Telecom Consultants of Rockland, California. The responses were evaluated in accordance with the criteria stated in the bid solicitation and public contract code. Based on the evaluation, Burco Constructors, Inc. submitted the lowest responsive and responsible bid in the amount of five hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars. Procurement Services received no bid protests. The recommended contractor possesses a valid California contractor's license as required. The contractor and the listed subcontractors are registered with the Department of Industrial Relations. So with all that said, the action being requested of your board today is to approve the award and contract execution of competitive bid number one-zero-four-nine-two to Burco Constructors, Inc. of Loomis, California, and the development of the Beacon Hill Emergency, for the development of the Beacon Hill Emergency Communications Tower Facility in the contract award amount of five hundred and twenty-six, two hundred and seventeen thousand, and authorize the Director of Administrative Services and the Purchasing Manager to modify existing site lease agreements, negotiate new site lease agreements, and solicit bids that support the development of the countywide interoperable radio network within the Tahoe Basin. I would be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Board members have any questions? All right. Any members of the public have any questions prior to the board taking action? What is the pleasure of the board?
Move approval?
Motion Montgomery, second Wigan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? Thank you very much. Okay. And item nine B. Okay, and item 9B.
Good morning Chairman Euler, Supervisors. My name is John Manning. I'm a buyer two with the Procurement Services Division. I'm here before you today requesting your approval to award bid number 10481 for the purchase of various fleet and emergency vehicles. Right now, I'd like to provide you with a brief background information regarding this procurement request. The county typically purchases an average of 50 vehicles each fiscal year. These vehicle requests typically result in the development and award of four bids on average, and that requires three separate Board of Supervisors action items. These statistics prompted us to develop the possibility of a joint cooperative vehicle bid, and our hopes were that by inviting other agencies to participate with us, we could achieve potentially some time and taxpayer dollar savings by consolidating these vehicle requirements into one competitive bid process instead of multiple. We invited over 20 agencies to, from the surrounding region, to meet and discuss the feasibility of a cooperative vehicle bid. After several planning sessions, three agencies agreed to join Placer County in this year's bid, and those agencies were the County of Eldorado, the County of Nevada, and the City of Lincoln. The total number of vehicles for all four agencies was just over 200 vehicles. Of those, of that amount, Placer County's allocation was 101. The Department of Public Works and Facilities Fleet Services Division is requesting to purchase 75 fleet-type vehicles, which include trucks, sedans, cargo vans, and sport utility vehicles. The Sheriff's Office is requesting to purchase 26 law enforcement-type vehicles, which include Chevy Tahos, pickup trucks, and cargo vans. The resulting bid was conducted and evaluated in accordance with the Placer County Purchasing Policy Manual, and no bid protests were received. By the time the bid closed, six bids had been submitted. Four of those were determined to be the lowest-responsive bidders based on each vehicle type that was included in the bid. The cost savings realized from the bid results is approximately $96,800. We're still in communication with our partner agencies to determine if any additional cost savings are being realized as a result of this process. For Placer County's vehicle requirements, we are requesting your board's approval to award purchase orders to Winter Chevrolet of Elk Grove, Albany Ford Subaru of Albany, and Future Nissan of Roseville in the maximum amount of $3,055,000. And I'd like to take a moment to thank the Department of Public Works and Facilities Fleet Services staff and the Sheriff's Office Fleet staff for their hard work on this bid. I'd also like to thank the Fleet and Procurement staff from the County of Eldorado, the County of Nevada, and the City of Lincoln for their hard work and time investment, as well as commitment to this process. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Board members have any questions on this item? Seeing no questions from board members, any member of the public want to address the board prior to us taking action? Okay, we're being, okay. We have a motion Holmes, second. Second Duran. All in favor, please say aye.
None.
Aye, opposed, none? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's go ahead and take our 9:45 timed item. Right on time here. Now, this is a proclamation and celebration of Placer Grown Month. And Josh, morning.
Good morning. Good morning Chairman Euler and Board members. I want to take this opportunity to thank you for your continued support of agriculture in Placer County. As you may have noticed, this year, we are transitioning from Placer Grown Week to Placer Grown Month. I'm pleased to report that that is because we had so many good events going on this month that they could not all fit into one week, and so we're expanding this proclamation into a full month of activities. We have several farm-to-table dinners going on. We have the Auburn Wine and Food Festival, the Machado's Apple Festival, the Farm and Barn Tour, and many others. We recently did a major revamp of the placergrown.org website, and I think you'll find it to be both visually beautiful and very, very helpful in connecting consumers to fresh local produce and livestock products. So, with me today is Carol Arnold, who's the Executive Director of the Placer Grown Organization, and she just wants to give you, would like to give you a little bit of an update on some of Placer Grown's recent activities.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, today I want to talk to you a little bit about the culmination of three years of work of building partnerships and strengthening our agricultural life here in Placer. First of all, I need to thank the Placer Community Foundation publicly. In celebration of their 10th anniversary, they donated $10,000 directly for voucher distribution at three farmers' markets. In three days' time, $9,860 was distributed directly to farmers through giving the vouchers to consumers. That's our favorite way to do it. It's a straight pass-through. The farmers were paid the day the vouchers were distributed. Marvelously successful, and can't thank Placer Community Foundation enough for thinking about farmers when they were thinking about celebrating. So, that was amazing. The next event was a partnership with Placer County Office of Education. We've done this event for five years. It's one of the most fun things we do. We do a farmer's market for children at the Health and Wellness Fair down in Loomis. So, 600 kids get 600 bags of produce and go home with that fresh food, and it's just another just great event, largely supported by Placer County Office of Education. Now, we get to the wild card. We went to the Farm-to-Fork this year. Woo, 50,000 people, and we, our tagline was "Placer County, Farm-to-Fork, A Way of Life Since 1849." Proud to report that Channel 3 did all of their filming from our booth, and we received kudos from both agricultural and tourism people down there. Paragary Restaurant Group, I'm sure you're all familiar with them, said that we actually added value to their booth. So, that was really good news. We handed out 2,000 pounds of apples, engaged with 5,000 people directly that we know of because there were 5,000 apples. The beer tasting and wine tasting lines were out. We had a 30-by-60 booth. They were out the booth all day long. We just handed out maps and ale trail maps, and it was really good. Merlot Marketing had a social media presence there. They handed out onesies that said adorably "Placer Grown," and t-shirts and children's t-shirts. So, that event was really, really successful. I'm really glad we were there, and I think we'll go again next year and knock their socks off. We were one of the big six, along with Whole Foods and General Produce and some other groups, but we really made a splash. So, it was worth all the effort. I have to really thank Maura Rowe with her creative vision out of Placer County Tourism. Certainly couldn't have done it without her, and certainly wouldn't have had the elevated vision that she brought to the project. So, can't say enough about Maura. It was, and Sheila Vancey who lifted 2,000 pounds of apples, but that's another story. So, we're not even to October yet. That's pretty funny. So, now we're in Placer Grown Month, and Josh mentioned events. So, Farm-to-Film Festival, Auburn Wine and Food Festival, Farm and Barn Tour, Machado's Orchards, Apple Days, Fall Dinner at Twin Peaks, Placer Conservator Dinner, Placer County Farm Bureau Hoedown, and that, the event that will close the month is the Crop-to-Tabletop Dinner, and we'd love to see you there. It's selling out very quickly. That's at Cask Winery and the Flower Farm. So, anyway, I think the main takeaway is strengthening partnerships and increasing reach so that people know that there's active ag. Those 1,244 small farms are starting to, people are starting to know about it. So, thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you for your question. So, I don't have the cool little proclamation to hand you. I believe you already have it, but I do want to read just what it says, and I'll skip all the whereas as I get right to the salient points. "Placer County's agricultural production consists of a diversified range of products, including grains, tree fruit, grapes, livestock, and forest products. Placer County's local crops and livestock are the source of the highest quality, freshest food available to Placer County residents. Placer County has been farm-to-fork since 1849, as mentioned earlier. When early settlers discovered the agricultural gold that could be produced utilizing county's rich soils, pure water, and perfect growing climate. Placer County produces over 15,000 acres of high-quality medium and short-grain rice as its number-one commodity. Placer County mandarins are world-famous for their consistent quality, flavor, and dark orange color. Placer County wineries are consistently given top awards in state, national, and international competitions, including recognition as the number-one winery in the state of California. Placer County's farmers and ranchers, including Supervisor Wigan, have survived two record-setting years of drought, done their part to conserve water while continuing to grow their crops and livestock. Placer County's agricultural products are available through a wide range of outlets such as farm stands, farmers' markets, local markets, and local restaurants. Placer County's farmers and ranchers are hard-working individuals who are good stewards of their land and maintain it for agricultural production for future generations. Placer County farms and ranches are beautiful places that are wonderful to visit. Placer County's local agricultural industry depends on direct sales of farm products to the local community in order to maintain economic sustainability. And for all those reasons, the Placer County Board of Supervisors declares the month of October to be "celebrate Placer Grown Month," encourages all citizens to support our local farmers and ranchers throughout the designated week and beyond by purchasing locally grown agricultural products." Thank you guys very much for representing your industry so well.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Okay. We will jump back to department head items, supplemental item 9-1. We finished all items nine, right?
Yeah, we've got the Facility Services.
Where? Which one?
This is the supplemental 9-1?
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, the Facility Services supplemental 9-1, because we're done with all other nine items, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, 9-1 Facility Services. "Placer County Government Center Request from Costco Wholesale Corporation for an exclusive agreement to negotiate." Mr. Graham, good morning.
Good morning Chairman, Board members. My name is Ken Graham with the Department of Public Works and Facilities, and today we're asking you to authorize the Director of Public Works and Facilities to execute an exclusive agreement to negotiate between the county and Costco, and make the determination that that action is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. On October 1st, the county received a request from Costco to consider what I'm going to call it an ENA, an Exclusive Negotiating Agreement, so I don't have to keep saying that term. That would establish a time period of about two years with possible extensions in which to negotiate a potential ground lease with Costco. The site being considered is near Willow Creek and First Avenue, which is right near the current Home Depot. The ENA is, does not commit the county to any particular action. There are no terms included in this agreement. It is really an opportunity to begin the discussions about a future potential ground lease and potential project. What Costco does receive is a right-of-entry to go upon our grounds to do whatever testing and reports that they need to make. They also have the ability to apply for potential land-use entitlements for any site that comes apart in that area. The county, in exchange for that, if Costco decides to terminate the agreement, then we will receive all the reports and studies that have been done in association with the project that we could then use for our own benefit into the future. Today, we're seeking your board's support of that exclusive negotiation agreement. We're asking really your permission to begin discussions with Costco. Again, there are no terms. There is no, nothing that has been discussed to this point, but this allows that discussion to begin with your board's permission. And with that, be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Board members have any questions prior to opening up for public comment? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and invite the public to comment on this item. Any member of the public wish to address the board, yourself, please identify yourself and try to keep your comments to three minutes, if you would, please. Good morning.
Thank you. My name is Charlene Daniels, and I'm a resident of the North Auburn area. Although a contract negotiation appears to be a relatively harmless, innocuous matter, it's not until you actually evaluate the potential ramifications of the negotiations that concerns our raise. First, can the board enter into a contract negotiation for a project that may be inconsistent with the mixed-use land use designation for the Auburn Bowman Community Plant? Second, the county has already approved a Placer County Government Center Development Relocation Project Proposal with a probable total cost of $6.4 million. This work was done in anticipation of a successful lease agreement with Costco. Clearly, this is a development project that was directly connected with the lease negotiation and has SEQA and master planning implications. The county is in the initial stages of preparing a master plan for the DeWitt Center. How does the contract negotiation impact the master plan process? Wouldn't the county have to consider the Costco project in the master plan? It was seen that the objectivity of developing a new master plan for it would be severely compromised. How can the public expect an open-minded, unbiased analysis with the county participating in a lease agreement? Again, the county is entering into the lease agreement with Costco. This may give the public the impression the project is a done deal. I think we can all look back, and we have heard that term a lot with previous proposal, that it was a done deal. Entering into a contract negotiation at this time will likely limit public involvement. Two, the county has not done all the necessary work that needs to be completed before it can enter to contract negotiation. Some of this work includes the county has not evaluated how much land is needed to provide county facilities at the DeWitt Center. The county has stated the commercial area at DeWitt was designated in the 1993 County Master Facility Plan. A review of this plan indicate it is a strategic plan focused on documenting the county's facilities' needs and where county facilities should be located. It is not a detailed master development plan, and it appears it was not analyzed as a development planned. Again, I'd like to provide an example of a more effective planning process for the DeWitt Center. Again, I don't know if the county has already considered this, but this is how it would go. The county would conduct a thorough county facility needs assessment. Then, the county would focus on preparing a master plan for DeWitt on the county needs and addressing community plan and general plan policies, including housing, land use, job housing ballot, and historic preservation. The county should fully analyze the alternatives of being tied down to a proposal. The 1993 plan concluded that the county facility should be located at DeWitt with satellite offices in South Placer and Tahoe. If the board has a different vision, that vision needs to be documented or decided in open forum with community input. The county's master facility planning needs to be completed before the county enters into lease negotiation agreement with a private corporation. The county's priority should not be private commercial development over proper county facility planning. It is premature to start lease agreement when the county needs to complete all its homework. Thank you.
Next, please. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Renee Berg. I live in the city of Auburn. At the Board of Supervisors meeting on June 2nd, timed item number four for Facility Services stated, "Present an update on the Placer County Government Center master planning process and provide public forum on proposed scope and process and receive direction from board." In the memorandum presented by Facility Services, it stated that the department intends to perform the following tasks. Number one, solicit proposals from qualified professional consultants to help prepare an updated Placer County Government Center master plan, which will include a community outreach component. At the North Auburn MAC meeting on July 14th, 2015, light item 8C states, "Placer County DeWitt Government Center Master Plan Update. Placer County is starting the process of updating the 1993 comprehensive facility master plan for the Government Center campus in North Auburn. The new master plan will establish a comprehensive vision and ongoing facilities planning guidebook, which will be employed for capital improvement projects through 2035. County staff will present accomplishments since the last master plan and then describe the process and scope for the new plan." the process and scope for the new plan, including our planned community and stakeholder engagement." It is October 6th, 2015, over four months after the June 2nd Board of Supervisors meeting, and to my knowledge, there has not been a request for proposal for a qualified professional to oversee the update of the master plan, and no public input on the matter at all. Now, Costco has asked the Director of Public Works and Facilities or designate to execute an exclusive agreement to negotiate between the county and Costco. How can the county enter into any kind of agreement with Costco before the master plan has even been updated with community input? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Eleanor Potuski from Newcastle, and I was really shocked when this came up at such a short notice. I feel like this is kind of deja vu. We're back on the merry-go-round again. You know, I understand that you guys have already been meeting with LLC Conkey this morning and in a closed session. Costco is requesting exclusive rights to negotiate with you, and the Board of Supervisors hasn't even addressed the updated master plan or the requirements laid out in surplus land use. And this whole thing, you know, this whole thing is being done kind of without notification to the public. We're just, I don't know the reason. I feel like this is a backdoor something or other, and I don't know the reason. I have my suspicions, but I don't know the reason. And I really, in dealing with the history of this project as a citizen in Placer County, I feel we're being gamed big time, and I don't appreciate it. I voted for your pay rates, by the way. So I don't like this at all, and I wanted to, let's see, I've got a thing in here I wanted to read, if I can get back. This land, this DeWitt, has been put up for National Register as a historical site, and the hearing for that is coming up on October 30th. So I think it is premature to start this before this hearing has come out, because we don't even know whether part of this is going to be declared a historical site. And any Costco plans or any future, you know, things like that are going to require demolition of buildings. So I think this is being done backwards, and I agree with Charlene's comments. There is a procedure. There are steps, and they should be done correctly instead of all this backroom negotiating and, you know, now you're doing this, now we're doing that. It's just, it's very confusing to the public, and it's unfair. And I just think that it could be potentially illegal. The ENA would not be prudent in light of their first ground lease agreement that called for demo of historic structures. We should also focus on the fact that the ENA, before a revised master plan, a new EIR, is also not prudent and potentially illegal. So I think the county needs to be careful here, because I think it could get you in a little hot water. Thank you.
Thank you. Just for the record, yeah, Supervisor Duran?
Ms. Potuski, I appreciate your words, but I just want to caution you. If you're accusing the Board of Supervisors of violating the Brown Act in your statement, you better have your facts straight.
I'm not accusing them. I'm just saying-
You said that we met with Mr. Conkey this morning.
That's what I was told.
If you have evidence of that, I wouldn't bring that up unless you know for a fact that that happened.
Okay, then withdraw that comment from what I said.
And all I'm saying is it's about integrity. I appreciate the fact that you're a private citizen, and you come into this forum, and you express your opinions. I think that's great, and I wish more people would do that. But just watch what you say.
I apologize, but I also am tired of this banner of transparency that's been around, because I don't think this project is transparent. I don't think, I think that it's very untransparent. A lot of us have asked questions. We get some answers, and then we get, there's just this dead silence. They don't have the paperwork to back it up. They don't have the meetings to back it up, and it's very frustrating to the public.
Thank you.
So all we're asking is-
Your comments.
Yep.
Thank you. And to conclude, I know we've had this before the Board of Supervisors, I don't know how many times. We've committed to having a master plan drawn up on this, so as far as the transparency question, I think we've been more than transparent here.
Okay. And County Council, if you would, please, just a clarification. The board did meet this morning in closed session, but this topic was nowhere near the conversation.
Yes, the topic was not discussed, and I'd also like to emphasize that the agreement before the board today is not a very complicated agreement. All it allows for is negotiations. Any entitlements and transaction documents would only be presented to the board after a full secret review, so the process, the public process will commence before there's any transaction documents or entitlements before the board.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else want to address the board under public comment prior to us considering the action on the exclusive right to negotiate? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring this item back. We are being asked to authorize the Director of Public Works and Facilities designate, or designate, excuse me, an exclusive agreement to negotiate between the county and Costco, and we are also being asked to make the determination that our action is exempt from CEQA pursuant to California Public Resource Code section cited in our agenda. Let's pleasure the Board. Supervisor Montgomery, do you have any comments on this?
Yeah, I just, since this is our opportunity to opine rather than ask clarifying questions, I'm going to take the opportunity to opine. I'm actually going to be voting no on this, not because I think there's anything wrong with the agreement. I am incredibly frustrated that this was released late Friday afternoon. I agree with some of the concerns and comments that were raised about the timing of this. I think this should have been brought forward as a regular agenda item, not as a supplemental item. But again, don't mistake my voting against this as an opposition to Costco here or potentially somewhere else. I just am a little bit concerned by what it looks like to the general public, given the contention that surrounded the earlier proposal. So that's it.
Okay.
The only comment I'd have is the item came in on October 1st, and the question was whether it could be properly noticed under the Brown Act on Friday or taken at the Tahoe meeting, and it seemed like the board would be criticized for taking this item to the Tahoe meeting.
Understood.
Yeah. And to that point, as Chairman, that was my call, was that even though it would be a supplemental notice that would be required in order for it to be heard down here, I thought the preference was to hear it down here instead of hearing it up in Tahoe, so I requested the supplemental agenda and the hearing of this item down here. Any other comments by board members prior to us taking action?
Yeah, I just have a comment on the issue of supplemental agenda items in general. I thought we had an understanding that all agenda items would be to the board, or at least poised and teed up by Wednesday the week before. So I'm a little uncomfortable with supplemental agenda items in general, not necessarily this one specifically, but that's my position, and I understand and do empathize with the position that Supervisor Montgomery has, to the extent that it may look like something is amiss, even though, to the best of my knowledge, nothing is amiss, but it does leave that impression, so.
All right. Supervisor Holmes?
Oh, and it's just better to bring it forward today when we're in Auburn than going up to Tahoe. People would think we're really trying to hide something if we went up to Tahoe and did this.
Do we have a motion on the item that's in front?
Mr. Chair, I'll be glad to make the motion approving 9.1, item A1 and 2.
Second. All right. Motion, Holmes, second, Duran. We have a roll call, please.
Holmes?
Aye.
Duran?
Yes.
Weigant?
Yep.
Montgomery?
No.
You'll alert.
Aye. Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and move on to our 10 o'clock timed item. This is, once I find it, I'll tell you exactly where it is. There we are. This is further consideration of the abandonment of Millside Road, cross-cut court, the retreat at Norstar. A number of items to consider, but prior to us jumping too deeply into this, Mr. Graham, I had received word that possibly there was going to be a request for a continuance on this item, so where do we stand at this point?
Yeah, it is my understanding that the two principal parties in this discussion have requested that we continue the item until November 3rd. I believe at the last meeting, your board asked them to see if they could work out some of their own issues. It appears they both mutually feel that they are working towards that goal and have requested that we give them another 30 days to do so. And so we would request that from your board to continue this item until November 3rd.
Okay. Any disagreement from either representative parties? No? Okay, do we have a motion to continue the item? I'm sorry.
Counsel, if counsel has any issues with 30 days?
No, and I just wanted to make sure we've set it on a timed certain-
Right, right.
-so that we can continue. It's scheduled for public hearing.
Thank you, Jerry.
So looking at our, what I have is our timed item list. We already have a 10 o'clock item on the 3rd, and we have a 9:30 item on the 3rd, so perhaps 10:30, given that we are anticipating the Facility Services item at 10 o'clock to be about 20 minutes. Would 10:30, any reason why 10:30 wouldn't work for anybody? No? Okay, do we have a motion to continue this item to 10:30 on November 3rd?
Sound moved.
One sec. Thank you. We have a motion, Montgomery, second, Weigant, to continue item 7A1 through 4, all-inclusive to November 3rd at 10:30. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, and the record reflects that Supervisor Holmes is temporarily absent. All right, thank you very much. Go forth and negotiate well. We will now move back to our Department Head Items with a Public Works item. Item 10, funding for transit, Placer County Transit Tahoe Area Regional Transit, Placer County Road Maintenance Activities.
Good morning, Will.
Mr. Chair, Will Garner, Public Works, and board members. I'm going to give a brief introduction that'll actually cover the next three items, and then we'll get into those individually. The next three items are annual claims for local transportation fund and state transit assistance funds, which are the core funding sources for our public transit services, not only here, but entire state of California. These funds were created by the Transportation Development Act in 1974, and at the local transportation fund, part of it is 1/4 cent of the state sales tax. And in smaller counties, at least in 1974, what was considered smaller counties, those funds can not only be used for public transit, but also for road maintenance, once that it's been determined that all the unmet transit needs that are identified are being met by our jurisdictions, which is the case. And then, a few years later, the state transit assistance was added, which is a portion of the gas tax, which is now a portion of the diesel tax, to pay for public transit, both operations and capital. So in our local situation here, the Placer County Transportation Planning Agency and the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency are responsible for distributing these funds, and they determine the amount that's available, and all of the cities and the county annually claim the funds and then take them back to their board. They approve them and distribute them to us for our annual operations, and they need to be consistent with our adopted budgets and so forth. So the first item is 10A1, which is the approval of the local transportation fund claim from the Placer County Transportation Planning Agency in the amount of $5.45,405,273, and that will cover a portion of the transit operation costs for Placer County Transit, for Tahoe Area Regional Transit, and for annual road maintenance. And the exact amounts are identified in the staff report and are on the claims.
Okay. Any members of the board have any question on the request for approval for the 1516 Transportation Fund claim for funding the Placer County Transportation Planning Agency in the amount of five-plus million dollars? Any questions by board members? Seeing none, any question by members of the public? All right, let's pleasure the board.
Second.
Motion, Duran, second, Montgomery. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, Supervisor Holmes absent. And now the TRPA Fiscal Year 1516 Local Transportation Fund item.
Yes, this item is, as you mentioned, TRPA's Local Transportation Fund in the amount of $677,727 for Tahoe Area Regional Transit. It will be used for transit operations within the Tahoe Basin.
Okay, questions by board members on any items presented by staff in the report? Seeing none, any questions or comments by members of the public? All right, let's pleasure the board.
Move approval.
Motion, Montgomery, second, Weigant. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Thank you. And item number three.
Item number three is also from the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency, the state transit assistance, in the amount of $164,878. Also will be used for transit operations by TART in the Tahoe Basin in 1516.
Questions by board members? Questions by members of the public? Pleasure the board.
Move approval.
We have a motion, Montgomery, and that second was Holmes. Is that correct? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, Supervisor Weigant temporarily absent at this time. All right, thank you very much. And, oh, our next item as well.
One more.
So this is a Tahoe Area Regional Transit contract for peak season bus drivers.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This item today is a request to authorize execution of an agreement with MV Transportation for five years in the amount of $1.5 million. For over 10 years now, we've had a contract to supplement our year-round staffing at Tahoe Area Regional Transit with contract staffing for the peak seasons, because the peaks are so much more serviced than the off-season. Obviously, we need a lot more staffing to pull that off, and in addition to our part-time people working full-time in the peak seasons, the use of extra help county-employed drivers, we also need this additional help from our contractors to supply more drivers. And so this year, in the summer, we actually extended the prior agreement one more season while we were negotiating a new contract as a result of an RFP that we did in the springtime. We had a single proposal from MV Transportation. It was a good proposal. We interviewed them, and after that, decided that we should recommend a ward to MV Transportation. They proposed two different prices, one based on the amount of hours that were worked, so the higher the amount of hours, the lower the cost, basically, to summarize it, and the amounts are in the staff report. However, the two levels of hours they proposed were very far apart, so what we ended up negotiating was a four-tier pricing structure, so the higher amount of hours that we use from this contract, the lower we pay. And based on our service plans for the upcoming winter and into next summer, we do believe we will achieve the lowest rate, which is $41.01 per shift hour for drivers. And this is actually a 13% reduction from the rate we just paid last summer and last winter. But I do also note in the staff report that was also a 12% increase from the year prior to that. So basically, this rate that's been proposed as the lowest rate takes us back to what they were charging us about two years ago. We believe the cost is reasonable. We understand it is a relatively high cost, but they have a high cost of recruitment and retention in the Tahoe area, just like we do. At times, they have to lodge them to get them here and trained, and sometimes while the drivers find homes for the season that they're working. So, and we assume that the level of service that we're providing today will- So, and we assume that the level of service that we're providing today will continue throughout this five-year period of the contract. However, if it doesn't, if funding sources reduce, the seasonal services would be reduced, and we would use the contract that much less. So we do have, we guarantee no level of hours in the contract, but we do have an anticipated amount of hours that we would use. As I said, it's a five-year contract, averages $300,000 a year over the five-year period. The increases from year to year are very reasonable, under 2%, and that is encouraging. So we are asking that you authorize the Director of Public Works and Facilities or designate to execute a contract with MV Transportation for peak season bus drivers for Tahoe area regional transit, the amount of $1,500,000, through September 30th, 2020. Funding will be provided through Placer County transient occupancy tax in the amount of $1.16 million, and through private contributions of $340,000. And if there's any questions.
All right, questions by board members? Seeing none, questions by members of the public? All right, let's pleasure the board.
Move approval.
In motion, Montgomery, and Second Holmes, all in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, none. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to our county executive item, General Fund Advance to In-Home Support Services Public Authority Fund.
Good morning, Brian Maynard, County Executive Office. The In-Home Supportive Services, or IHSS Fund, supports the entity by the same name that provides home care services to residents who are elderly or disabled. The program is funded largely by federal and state funding, reimbursed from the state on a reimbursement claim basis. So due to the lengthy turnaround time that often results from state turnaround times for reimbursements, the fund itself ends up in a negative cash position. CEO staff discussed this with HHS and with the county auditor, and to resolve a host of accounting issues and negative cash issues, the remedy would be the requested action, a long-term advance from the General Fund to the IHSS Fund. This amount of $440,000 was approved by your board at final budget specifically for this purpose. With that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions from members of the board? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, let's pleasure the board. Moving in second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Middle Fork Project?
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll now take up Brett, item?
Eleven B.
Eleven B, thank you. Presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Honorable Board Members. Brett Story here today bringing you an informational item. I think I have a PowerPoint.
Yep.
Quite sure, there it comes. And normally, we provide you one update a year, but this year, there's been some conditions that have changed, and so the team felt like we needed to provide you a second look. Of course, Board Members Holmes and Wiegant hear this throughout the year, so they can chime in, should they need to. We have some revised financial expectations, sorry to be the bearer of some bad news here, but we're within a four-year drought, which has reduced our fuel, which is how we make the power in the hydroelectric side. The California wholesale electric market conditions have brought less-than-expected value, and it's about 22% reduction from last year, and the market is generally contained around natural gas. And natural gas is at a historic low, demand is low, it's generally predicted to be not a severe winter in the East Coast, which is generally where all the natural gas gets used, so there's a bunch of it out there, and people aren't buying it, which affects all of the power pricing, including hydroelectric and all other renewable power. So we've seen a 22% reduction in the market. Those market conditions are expected to be weak for some time, that could mean two years, it could mean five years, you know, those are one of those things that we just don't know enough about yet, the entire industry, not just Placer County and the Middle Fork team. The fixed costs of the project at this point are around $27 million. The staff and the board decided to have us focus on all of the variable costs to see how we could come up with some new solutions. So the actions that were taken this year by the Middle Fork Project Finance Authority Board were to approve the budget adjustments, where 17.5 million was reduced, so we went from 47.5 down to $30 million, and that happened in July of this year. And that 17.5 million, a combination of $11 million in postponement of capital projects, another $6 million in a reduction of what we would have put towards reserved, and then there was some contributions from some staff cost savings as well that were put in there. On a bright note, the first bond payment, debt payment was made to the treasurer, county treasurer, for $2.8 million. That happened, I believe, about two weeks ago. Check cashed, so that's always good, to get, starting to pay back our debt, that's always good, as you all well know. Also wanted to remind the board, as we do each time, that this project is based on a quite volatile system, both on the weather side, as you know, the drought, and also the power side, which I just talked about, so that means the revenue is volatile. And just, this is a chart that I brought you back in May, just shows you the average production is around a million megawatt hours. Last year, we did half of that. It was anticipated that we would do 390 megawatt hours. As you can see, it's already, due to the rain and snow, we did not get, we've reduced that down to about 325,000 megawatt hours, which is approaching the low of the 50-year project history, quite frankly, and so we're, you know, we're hopeful, we're all hopeful that weather will be better. You may have heard about the, I forget, the monster El Nino, or whatever they're colossal, or whatever they're calling it. I would remind the board that El Nino was only one of five major factors that our meteorologist puts together. There is still warm water near Alaska, which is another major indicator that water needs to cool for us to get what we would expect as a normal or above-average winter. So there's still hope for that. Our meteorologist comes in about three or four weeks to give us the winter presentation, so we'll know more at that time. A little bit of, because of all that, our board and our management and staff decided to take an increased focus on the financial planning for next year and beyond, given the current conditions we're seeing ourselves in. Some of the things that have happened, our capital costs have now been prioritized, we asked the engineering staff to put together, you know, what are the major factors, the critical, the urgent, the normal, and the low, and we've prioritized those. And as you might expect, critical is a license condition or a safety condition, urgent is something that needs to be looked at in the next year or so that may affect operations, normal, of course, is normal maintenance, and then lower items are things that would be nice to have. So that complete prioritization of the project has been done. Also, on the revenue side, we've looked at the revenue year types, which is to say, you know, not always when you get lots of rain do you have your highest revenue years. There are some other combination factors, so the staff has sorted those into, so that we can get a better look at what we think the weather would be like, we see what the power market's like, we can sort of anticipate what type of year we might have coming up. And then the capital costs, which are the majority of the variable costs, can be adjusted to that prioritization category, so that going into the year, maybe we have a better idea of what we're going to accomplish. And just as your board often looks at, the staffing costs versus a greater outsourcing potential is to be looked at, and we're specifically looking at that this year, which I'll talk about in a moment. We're also undergoing a review of the revenue amounts in each of the, of our reserve accounts, pardon me. And as you may remember, the Middle Fork Board does have all of the reserve accounts and all of the policies that were adopted in April of 2013. As staff, we continue to look for ways to improve those. In this sense, we are, for example, reviewing the emergency reserve, because we're looking at all of the insurance on the project, so that we can come back and perhaps not put as much in reserves, but have a better plan moving forward. Same would hold true for the capital reserves, as well as the reserves that take care of the average costs of the project. So we're looking at all that, we'll be bringing that back, hopefully saving some money by not necessarily putting in a reserve, but making it more working capital for the project, and eventually, hopefully, we have some payouts to both the board, the county and PCWA.
Brett, let me stop you right there. Robert, I'm sorry, I just noticed your laptop was on, did you have anything going on?
Because I was temporarily here and I failed to turn off my microphone.
That's all right, I just noticed that it was on. My apologies, go ahead.
No problem. The 2016 budget, which will be heard by our Middle Fork Finance Authority Board in October, has been prepared with these lower revenue expectations, now we know more about the market, the lower reserve contributions, and lower staff costs, and one of those items is because the FERC license, again, is still not expected, and it's, as I've told you before, the staff, we're all done, the federal government is done, it sits with the State Office of Water Resources Board, which, as you know, they're working on many projects, they're working on the drought, so all of their staff has been on those projects and not looking at the license conditions. They have said, hopefully, we'll be out of the drought, we'll be able to get back to it, so we potentially could get the license in 2017, which isn't a bad thing, it allows us to operate under the older conditions, which are still good for the river, but it allows us to not incur as many costs or use as much water in certain situations, which we don't have at the moment. But some of the things that we're looking at going forward are outsourcing the control room, control center operations, and the middle office actions. And by that, I mean, when, our current contract, for example, with Pacific Gas and Electric has the people at PCWA making the decisions on what power to sell and how to sell it. And then PG&E has a, what they call a control room, where they actually perform those operations to the California Independent System Operator, and move that and make the sale itself. That contract will conclude at the end of 2017. We are looking at the way, how we, the options we have moving forward. One of those options was to build our own control room. When I say "our," I'm representing the Middle Fork Project, not necessarily the county. PCWA would build their own control center, and they would hire up to six employees to run that 24-by-7 operation. Given what I've told you earlier about the costs and the smaller amount of revenue, we've looked at other ways to do this. One of those ways is to move forward, to discuss with seasoned operational control rooms in the region on how this could be done. We've been fortunate, we've been talking to the Northern California Power Agency, which has been around for 25-plus years, performing these types of operations. It's looking at a potential great cost savings to the county. Ironically, this is what our secondary position was when we came in 2011 to award the contract to PG&E, we were going to go with a different company with NCPA actually doing the control room services. So we chose PG&E because it had more guaranteed income, we're now finding there is no guaranteed income anymore, given the conditions of the market. So this type of operation, we believe, can provide as much as a million dollars in savings starting next year, again, because we don't have to hire the personnel, we don't have to build the full control room, and we don't have to have a lot of the software and then train all of those individuals. PCWA would still have people that would be trained in the operation as backups, but it would cost far less amount of money. So we are, the county is working with PCWA right now, in fact, I have a meeting when we finish here today, to go over what our goals and objectives of a contract like that would be, and then to proceed along moving forward. Again, we're looking to save money, but still keep all of the safety, and all of the same work would still be done by PCWA in deciding how and what to sell, they would, again, just be the control room that implements those decisions. A little bit about that power sales approach, as I mentioned, the contract with PG&E ends at December of 2017, which means we have to be ready to go long before then, which is why we're moving out this year. The sales staff has been in place at PCWA since 2013, and have been bringing, quite frankly, pretty good added value, which we try to show every year at the Middle Fork Project Finance Authority, the difference between what PG&E would have done for us versus what our employees at PCWA are doing for us. The conditions, that power market continually changes the conditions, and quite frankly, the opportunities. Every couple of months, we see a different type of opportunity, we have people analyzing that, we're looking at that before we go into our next contract. Again, the technical team is already working. We have a consultant, Dean Tibbs, who's been with this project since the beginning, and myself work with the technical team of PCWA to ensure that the county's interests are also involved in all of this stuff. We are already reaching out to counterparties with potential interest for this, just to understand what it is our options will be. And again, there'll be a variety of ways to sell the products to the Middle Fork, there's the power itself, the capacity piece of the power, the renewable energy credits, there are financial positions that effectively you can sell your future power for greater money now than what it might be in the future. And then possibly, the carbon market is evolving, and there could be some elements of that market that can be brought to the table for that. We could end up with one contract, we could end up with multiple contracts, there's a variety of counterparties that are possible, we are looking into all of those facets, Northern California Power Association, there are other pieces of that, which is the middle office, which essentially is full-time, working with all those counterparties and those contracts to understand them and all of the laws that go with that. Again, that feels like something that would potentially be better utilize a service that's been out there doing it for some time than bringing someone brand-new up to speed, so that's another facet that we're looking for, to outsource on that project. And really, the next steps, after this year, we get through with formulating all that, we will define a program next year, we will negotiate contract or contracts, we will update all of those policies to ensure that all of the rules and regulations of federal, state, and local are accounted for. And then really, with everything in place in 2017, we have to, we will be getting the streamlined process, working with all of those contractors, that control center, making sure that everything works, because, you know, December 31st, at 12:00 midnight, PG&E will unplug, and we will have to plug in, but we will be ready for those operations. Happy to take any questions from the board, or anyone else?
Board members have any questions? I'm not seeing any. Any members of the public have any questions on what Brett has presented? Well, not as cheery as I would like.
No, us either.
We accept the reality as it is, so the, one of the reasons that I appreciate this level of detail in this presentation is, many people have now, for a number of years, looked at the county's position in this partnership with PCWA, and the revenue that we hope to someday realize from this partnership as perhaps the little pot of gold for everybody's individual project. I just want to let them know that sometimes we just have an empty pot with no gold in it, and to, at least for the foreseeable future, we're worried about ongoing operations, maintenance costs, debt service, and of course, the costs associated with the environmental restoration work that is going on in regard to the burn area, a number of things that when we normally think about selling electricity and the revenue associated with that, we might not be thinking about in terms of the ongoing operational costs, both seen and unseen.
Yes, the project is almost as old as I am, so it's graying as well. We can't allow that to happen.
Needs to get checkups on rate or basis.
It does, and I would remind you that your board passed a wonderful policy of how to spend those revenues, which looks at the prioritization of infrastructure, and I think has been well crafted, and I think you'll be ready for it when we do bring you.
When you do have some revenue for it.
Exactly.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Brett.
Thanks, Brett.
All right, let's move on to our next presentation, this from our new Director of Communications, is that your official title? What is your official?
Director of Communications and Public Affairs.
And Public Affairs.
Yes.
Regarding the Placer County Branding Initiative that has been underway for some time, we have a neat little presentation that looks at some of what's been put together for us. So, which one of you is running point on this? DeeDee's got the clicker, but you got the mic on.
I'm gonna start. Chairman Yulker, morning. Honorable members of the board, and then I'm gonna do the handoff to DeeDee in a moment or two. Dave Snyder, Office of Economic Development. So way back in the waybacks, in 2013, the Office of Economic Development embarked on a mission to develop a logo that could be used to represent Placer County for both tourism and economic development. So way back in the waybacks, in 2013, the Office of Economic Development embarked on a mission to develop a logo that could be used to represent Placer County for both tourism and economic development purposes. You will remember that historically, we utilize the infamous script logo for these purposes, and we're hope to get that back up on the screen. It's trying. It's pushing. It's not happening yet.
Our technology.
There we go.
Next slide. Ah, there it is. And many of us felt it was time for a change, not unlike the three martini lunch that lives on in Mad Men episodes. Early on, I realized and researched some cities and counties elsewhere in the region, and learned that jurisdictions were spending upwards of $80,000 or more on branding and logo development, a sum that seemed rather astronomical to me. And that fairly new community between Sacramento and Folsom will go unnamed. In consultation with the gang of four, including the architect, Paul Griffith, Jerry Gómez, Lori Woods, and yours truly, a decision was made to see if we could accomplish this project in-house. A talented focus group was assembled, including Eric Bergen, Dieter Wittenberg, Leslie Blag, Kathy Buchanan, and Darren Huppert, all of whom gave up several lunch hours to act as a sounding board to Paul, Lori, Jerry, and myself on this important project. This, that time, our expert graphic designer, Miranda Glick, has stood by us through thick and thin to support this effort. As with all iconic logos that you've seen, the idea was to design an eye-catching, contemporary logo that is simple, memorable, timeless, and appropriate. It also serves as a platform from which there will be many uses that help to strengthen Placer's identity among residents, visitors, and the business community. From an economic development perspective, a well-crafted branding strategy will assist the county's efforts to promote and inspire both new business development and job creation. Some of the things we hope to accomplish with the branding include showcasing Placer County and its diversity, raising awareness with the logo as a centerpiece of marketing campaigns that increase our visibility to the outside world, articulating Placer County and the Sunset Industrial Area particularly as a premier business location, communicating our great lifestyle, safe neighborhoods, exemplary schools, access to top-notch health care (we're still number two in California), arts, culture, history, and our world-class outdoor recreation. These are increasingly important assets and attributes that business executives and entrepreneurs seek when considering relocation or new business ventures. This initiative provides a springboard to help us differentiate Placer County from other markets and stand out from the competition. It also captures and engenders a sense of pride amongst our fellow employees and all those who live, work, and play in Placer County. Our award-winning in-house videographer and cinematographer, Eric Bergen, captured the spirit of Placer, the place, and its people in a very personalized way in this short video. And we lost it again.
Oh, they're on it.
This is my backyard.
Well, this is my place. This is where I live. This is where I work. This is where I play. And this is where I'm raising my family.
This is our sanity.
This is our park.
This is my farmer's market.
This is Tahoe.
This is our summer.
This is my neighborhood.
Our history.
Our skyscrapers.
This is my craft.
And this is my industry.
My coworker.
This is my recharge.
This is my day off.
Our future.
My babies.
This is my escape.
This is my community.
This is my team.
This is my Ironman.
This is my challenge.
This is my fight.
This is my home.
This is Placer.
It's better every time you watch it. Fast forward.
Quite done, yeah?
It's basically done. It's just a little closing beat. It's for the mood.
Paid to black.
Now we can go back to our slides.
So fast forward to 2015. We've received a certificate of registration from the U.S. Patent and Trademark Office, protecting our intellectual property, so county council can rest easy. Our world-class communications and public affairs staff recognized the need to clarify and expand its use to represent more than just economic development and tourism, that in fact, it could represent the government of Placer County, as well as the people and the place. So with that, I'd like to turn the program over to DeeDee Cordell, our Director of Communications and Public Affairs, to talk about where we go from here.
Thank you. Thank you all for taking the time to hear us this morning. I know you've got a jam-packed full schedule. This is something we're very passionate about. We've been working really hard on this for several months, and we're all very passionate about it. So we're really happy to finally be here. As Dave mentioned, when I came on board in January, we talked through kind of the logo and the purpose of it, and we identified the need to increase its use in some way, to help improve the lack of consistency that we saw in business cards and PowerPoint templates and things like that. There was a lot of different departments who had their own unique look and style, and we wanted to really create a uniformed look and appearance for the entire county. We wanted to improve the perception of the county and the services that we provide. But most importantly, I think the biggest thing we wanted to accomplish was to really make that connection. I've heard so many times from many of you, that a lot of the people out there don't even know all of the wonderful services that the county provides. And I think some of that is because of a lack of clarity about what it is that we do. As you can see from this slide, we had many, many different brochures. They all look different. They all feel different. They all have different logos. We had business cards, no two business cards alike. And we have just a lot of confusion, I think, about that from the public. It doesn't really say, this is who we are. And all of these logos were created with the best of intentions from departments that knew that there was a demand for that. There was a need to really clarify who they are, but they didn't have that overarching county look and feel to get behind. So what we started doing was an effort to try and improve that. And the benefits of this campaign that we've been underway with is primarily improve public perception. We anticipate, over time, some cost savings, both from the design time, because it takes a lot of time for people to create brochures from scratch and PowerPoint presentations from scratch. So if we could provide templates for them that would already be designed with the county brand, then we would be able to have them just plug in the content. All they'd have to worry about is plugging their information into these templates, and that would save a lot of time. And then also, by standardizing, we would have a much larger ability to buy in bulk. We could, there 'll probably be some odds and ends that will be unique, but for the most part, when you have one standard business card, for the most part, that will significantly reduce the cost to buying materials. And then the biggest benefit, as I mentioned, is that clarity and awareness of the county services. So just to give you an example for a visual presentation of what I mean by that, you know, if you are looking at someone with a polo shirt on that has a logo or seal on it, or if you're looking at a government vehicle that has a seal on it, if you're looking at a building or a brochure that has a seal on it, you have to look pretty close to make that connection that it's actually Placer County. And as a vehicle drives by, it could be the state. It could be the city of Auburn. And so you could easily mess that up and not make that connection. But if you see the logo very clearly, it stands out. It makes it pop. And it's very easy for people to identify. The services that I have just received have come from Placer County. So I think that's one of the biggest benefits of this initiative. The process, I want to make sure we emphasize, this was all done with county staff. As Dave mentioned, there are a lot of organizations who have done this and spent a lot of money on it. But we did it over a long period of time. It would have been done a lot faster if we'd been able to contract it out. But it was done with a very talented staff, who I'd actually like to take a moment to recognize. My team back there. Could you guys stand up, please? I can't even tell you how honored I am to have adopted these guys. They are so incredibly talented, and they have been working very hard, in many cases, through their lunch breaks and whatnot. Thank you guys very much. They are the real brains behind all of this. And so they've been working very hard to get this done during their regular workload, amongst all the other things that we've been trying to do. So we started some focus groups, and we had probably a dozen or more focus groups that we participated in, to hear from employees, what they thought, what their feelings were. And in all honesty, I think we kind of went into it a little arrogant, thinking that we would take the Placer logo by itself, and everyone would just see that and love it and want it to be their logo. But that is actually not what we found. And what we found was that they loved it, and they would do it, but they really felt like they needed something a little bit more formal. So we went back to the drawing board, and we came up with this variation of the Placer logo that Dave and the economic development team came up with. And as soon as we introduced this in the focus groups, we got overwhelmingly positive results. And as soon as we started showing this, we were getting 85% to 88% of the focus groups were saying, that is definitely what I would like to use as our logo. And so there's a lot of flexibility with this particular logo. A, it builds on the primary logo for economic development and tourism purposes. It makes that connection that the services that we provide at the county are part of the reason that this place is so awesome. And we have an amazingly well-run government, and it's a very efficient government. And I think that's a lot of the reason that we have such a wonderful place to live and work. So as you can see, we could show the county version of the logo, and then departments and divisions can have their own very specific logo that builds back into the county logo. We have the ability to, like with the MyPlacer option, that's for our Intranet and all of our internal employee engagement initiatives. And then we have some flexibility for economic development purposes, to play with it with marketing, with something like Ski Placer. A very wise man came up with that. And so we have the ability to do Ski Placer, Drink Placer, Eat Placer, to help, from a marketing perspective, all of the wonders that are, and to get the logo out there a little bit more clearly. So we've created some guidelines. We've got a very thick, in-depth book of guidelines, but we also have a one sheet that makes it simple for people, for your typical users. And we have, those guidelines clarify when to use the seal, because there will always be a very important place for the seal. That is an official seal of the government. But for most county purposes, I think we're going to find a lot of people want to use the county-of version. So we've put some clarity in there, when to use the seal, when to use the Placer logo by itself, when to use the county-of version of the logo. It also includes recommended fonts and colors that people can use when creating products, so that they look very nice with the logo and they don't clash. And we've, probably the best part of all of this, created the templates. So for example, this PowerPoint template I'm using right now is something you'll start to see a lot more of, as we will put that out there on the MyPlacer site, the Employee Intranet site. And people will be able to download this and just plug in content. And you can even change the photos to match the topic of your particular presentation or to match the department. Perhaps Public Works could do bridges if they wanted to. That leaves some flexibility, but it creates a standardized look. And we've got brochure templates, business cards, letterhead, et cetera. Miranda Glick, our amazing graphic designer, has even created for business cards, a fantastic business card ordering sheet that, as you fill in your information, it creates the card for you. You can see it right then and there. And it doesn't even require design coordination with central services anymore. It can be instantly ordered and sent to the printer. So it'll save a lot of time and money there. As I said, all of this is available on the Employee Intranet, effective immediately. And we will be implementing the use of these templates over time, and I think that's an important point. We don't want to waste anything. So it will not happen overnight, but we have to be patient while we work through any products that currently exist. We don't want anybody to throw anything away. We want to make sure that they continue to use up the stock that they've got. And then when it's time to reorder new products, they order things using the new branded templates. And the website will be refreshed in the next few days. They're finalizing some little touches to it right now, but the website will be refreshed with a new look that actually represents this brand as well. And because office counsel would probably kill me if I didn't say this, I want to make sure that everybody knows, if there is a need for the public to use this logo for any reason, there is a simple request form that they can send us, or it'll be online. We're going to post it. So they can just send us a note at our branding website, our branding email address, sorry, that will give them the ability to get a limited-use license. So if they need it for, you know, promotional materials or something, we just want to be sure that because it is a registered trademark, we need to protect that brand. We need to protect that, the sanctity of that image. And so we want to make sure it's used for appropriate reasons. And so this is just a quick snapshot of some of the many products that we've been creating and some of the templates that we have now, to show how a consistent image can start to make that connection to taxpayers. For, this is where, you know, your services are coming from when they're using our county services. And over time, it'll take a while, like I said, but I think over time, we will start to really improve that connection to the taxpayers for the services that they receive. And that is all we have for you, if you have any questions for us.
Questions by board members? Senator Montgomery, or comment?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to your staff for all your efforts on this, and just really reiterate, when this idea first came to me, I said, we can't really spend any money on this, and we need to make sure that anything we have on hand, cardstock, paper, all of that, we use before we replace it. Because, you know, I didn't want to throw out a bunch of stuff that we already had. And so you met those goals of mine, as well as coming up with a great new logo. I'm, as you can see, a little bit partial to our seal, and I will continue to wear that. But I do want to thank you, and particularly your staff at the back of the room, for all the work that they put into this. So thank you.
Okay. Social media engagement, where do we stand with branding our social media sites with these colors and logos and all that other good stuff?
Well, we sort of jumped ahead and did that a little while ago. So it's all out there already. We were so excited about it. As soon as we saw the reception from the workforce about how much they liked it, we immediately started plugging it into a lot of our little things, a lot of our social media sites and things like that. It's even on our press release distribution system as well. So it's been sneaking out there little by little over the last couple of weeks. And today, we plan to make a much bigger splash and use the video, I think, to really kind of help spread the word. Because when it boils down to it, that video represents what the, or the logo represents what that video is kind of personifying. And so we're trying to make that connection.
But it's out there. It's all.
And the utilization of various social media icons on our publications to let folks know that we are out there, and if they want information, it's readily available through various social media outlets.
Yes. And we will get that out there much more as these new products are created. So the template for the letterhead has the social media icons built into it, and we'll try and plug it in wherever we can on the business card template as well, because it is a great way for people to come direct to us and get that information and kind of eliminate all the middlemen and the clutter and the noise, and just go right to us. So we would encourage everyone to follow us on all those social media sites. We're out there everywhere.
Great. Thank you. All right. I don't see any other questions or comments from board members. So thank you very much, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Okay. At this time, we will take up our 11 o'clock timed item. This is an HHS item regarding temporary homeless shelter and a request for funding. This is an HHS item regarding Temporary Homeless Shelter and a Request for Financial Morning, Ms. Brown.
Good morning, Chair Yuler, members of the board. Jeff Brown, your Health and Human Services Director. I'm here this morning with our Department Assistant Director, Tammy Moss Chandler. We are returning per your direction today to share with you our review of Right Hand Auburn's August eighteenth request to your board for two things. One was reimbursement of construction costs associated with additional upgrades to the shelter to accommodate additional services, and two was funding for costs associated with the ongoing operation of the shelter. As a bit of history, your board approved in February two thousand fifteen a site access agreement to allow for a ninety-day pilot operation of a temporary emergency shelter.
Jeff, let me interrupt you real quick. Yeah, if we could adjust the volume, if I could have our AV folks take Jeff's microphone up a little bit, it's a little quiet in here, so hopefully they're right on top of that and you'll be coming through.
Great, first time I've ever been accused of being quiet.
There you go. Oh, that's good. Thank you, John.
An accomplishment. So as a bit of history, your board approved in February fifth, February two thousand fifteen a site access operational agreement to allow for a ninety-day pilot operation of a temporary emergency homeless shelter by Right Hand Auburn and Volunteers of America. Began operations on June first at the Duett Government Center in the former low-security prisoner barracks. On August eighteenth, your board approved an amendment to the original site access agreement allowing for temporary homeless services to continue through March thirty-first, two thousand sixteen. So this morning, we're requesting that your board consider a one-time contribution, up to forty thousand dollars, for construction and facility improvement costs associated with additional upgrades to the shelter consistent with the site access agreement; two, a contractual agreement with Right Hand Auburn, consistent with their services delivery contract with Volunteers of America, to jointly fund shelter operations in an amount not to exceed two hundred twenty-five thousand, two hundred sixteen dollars, for the period November first of this year to March thirty-first, two thousand sixteen; and finally, approve modifications to the site access agreement that reflect any actions that your board might take this morning in regards to the above considerations. So now I'd like to ask Tammy to share with you more detail regarding the above requests and staff's review.
Thank you, Jeff.
Good morning, Chair Yuler.
Members of the board, the financial considerations before your board today are about fifty-one thousand dollars less than the financial request that was before you in August, and also represents expansion to serve significantly more people than the financial request that was before you in August. The capital improvements that Jeff mentioned are a significant result of the savings. They were estimated at one hundred and fifty thousand dollars as an estimated amount in August. And the capital improvements are, can be categorized in three areas. The first area is specific to accessibility and exiting improvements that are necessary to allow for the increased occupancy that your board approved in August. And Facility Services with Ken Graham, and our Building Services with Tim Wagner, walked through several times with Right Hand Auburn to inspect the facilities. And Facility Services actually has come up with a less rigorous and more cost-effective way to accomplish the accessibility and entry issues that are on, have to do with the walkway and entrances to the shelter. So the current estimate before your board today is about thirty thousand instead of the initial sixty-one thousand. We actually also looked at the electrical upgrades that may be necessary in order to bring in additional refrigeration and potentially some additional equipment, like microwaves, and that may be able to be accomplished for five thousand dollars. It could go up to ten thousand dollars after Facilities does its final inspection of the kind of equipment that will come in that would just allow for more prepackaged food to be stored and served on-site and continue to be able to utilize the service delivery of meals. That's the primary way that meals are served at the shelter right now. The most significant structural modification that was proposed in August had to do with, I'm not sure if I can access the slides up here, but in your board packet, there's actually a document with the layout of the facility. This is it, thank you. And so the most significant modifications to the facility actually had to do with this area of the control room, doesn't really work in the light too well, huh? That you see at the bottom center of the diagram. And this area is actually where the Sheriff's Office currently has their monitoring control for the laundry facilities that are on the far right of the facility. And the structural modifications included changing, moving this control room right here over to the storage area so that staff could have monitoring and staff facilities for the Sheriff's Office laundry facility. After further review with Right Hand Auburn, this actually is, may be more expensive than was originally estimated, and since your August meeting, we've actually learned that the Sheriff's Office intends to move those staff and laundry facilities by the end of this fiscal year. So that really informed the recommendation not to invest this level of infrastructure into the building at this time. What it really would have allowed for in this bottom area of the map is really an improved area for entry and exit of the building. This room that says "Control" in that area actually has a great visual view. It has glass windows, so you can see both courtyards fully. It allows really nice access into and out of the facility. And that lower room, called Visitation and Multipurpose Room, was envisioned to be used for counseling, group services, and at the very bottom, you see a room that's actually set up as a medical exam room that could have confidential meetings as well as medical services on-site. So definitely without the, with the recommendation not to make adjustments to allow Right Hand Auburn to use this facility, we really had to look closely at the operational model and what could be possible for a twenty-four-seven shelter and service center that could have confidential intake and assessment, that it could incorporate case management services such as those recommended by Dr. Marbut to your board last spring, and that would allow the kind of intake and exiting that is necessary for a twenty-four-seven operation, where the shelter and services are operating twenty-four hours a day. So we quickly actually identified this room over here on the far left of the building. It's actually a confined office that's currently used as storage, and it would allow for a confidential room that could be freed up rather quickly, so that there could be confidential counseling and intake services, although not as ideal as the monitoring and control entry and reception at the bottom of the diagram. It would free up this area right here to help improve intake alongside with that office to allow for a twenty-four-seven facility that really wouldn't be able to serve very many more people than they currently serve, which is forty-seven people through a nighttime model. So our final discussion and analysis had to do with the fact that winter is approaching, and Right Hand Auburn is currently at their maximum capacity nightly. And with the winter rather approaching, how many more people might need services for even basic health and safety services that are provided now with nighttime shelter, food, and laundry and shower services on a scheduled basis? So we've identified this area of the building that could be opened up. It's a warehouse space, and we found another place to store the items that are in there now that could be opened up as a winter shelter area. It would actually allow for something that's like what Dr. Marbut initiated in San Antonio, which would be a two-program, one-place model. So here in this core area, there could be twenty-four-hour services with case management and comprehensive kind of transformative services. And over here would be the overflow that's a bit separate, where folks are coming in just for basic protection from winter weather and having those basic services. So those are the operational issues that we looked at. We certainly looked at what dollars might we leverage from an operational perspective. We've identified so far that we can help support the shelter to develop a CalFresh methodology that Volunteers of America has at some of their other shelters, where people who have an electronic benefits card with CalFresh can swipe their card there at the shelter. It will take a few weeks to get developed, but it would allow dollars to come in that actually come with the clients who are served there. We also want to give your board an update of what else is happening around community meetings as a concluding thought, that we continue to have community meetings to hear from people about what their concerns or thoughts are about the temporary shelter, as well as to get current information about the shelter. After your board's meeting in August, the meeting actually transitioned from Ken Graham and Facility Services to the Department of Health and Human Services. So we're suggesting to you today that we continue to meet at a minimum of quarterly and as frequently as necessary at the discretion of Jeff Brown, our Health and Human Services Director. And in addition to the community meetings that are specific about the temporary shelter, where Right Hand Auburn and Volunteers of America and county staff participate with community members, we're also having very robust and ongoing meetings around Dr. Marbut's comprehensive recommendations last spring to your board. So we're working with the Homeless Resource Council of the Sierras to facilitate meetings that focus on the long-term goal of a twenty-four-seven shelter and service center here in the Auburn area, working in the South Placer County area to look at the possibility of a twenty-four-seven service and shelter program in the Roseville area. Dr. Marbut had recommendations around using the homeless management information system to have more comprehensive collective case management services across the providers, and we're doing ongoing work about that. And we have a group that's meeting really around the solutions around housing and making sure that as people work through a case management program like that proposed with the shelter, where there's really clear objectives at thirty, sixty, and ninety days, with the objective of going into permanent housing, that we actually have a supply of permanent affordable housing in our community. So with that, I'll see if Jeff has anything to add, and turn it to the board for your questions.
All right. Board members, have any questions prior to us hearing from Representative Right Hand Auburn regarding the request? Any questions of staff? Supervisor Montgomery?
I had one clarifying question. I had asked as part of the presentation to understand what the daily cost per person is with this proposal, because I know that Dr. Marbut gave us a range that would cover expected services.
The daily cost of this proposal for the next five months is just under thirty-one dollars a day per individual. I should note with that that that's based on the budget of serving about seventy-five people a night, and we certainly looked at the operational budget, so you would have a feel for the maximum number of people that, that we're, I'm sorry, maximum dollar amount that you would contribute. So certainly, the occupancy allows for potentially even greater than seventy-five people to be housed if there's particularly inclement weather, but we estimated the budget based on what we are expecting at this point, between the number of people accessing services and the number of local homeless individuals that may need services during the winter months.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions by board members? Okay, seeing none, what I'd like to do is have Representative Right Hand Auburn and Volunteers of America, if they're interested in coming up first, give you each up to five minutes to make your presentation on behalf of your respective organization, should you need that. If you don't, don't feel obligated to fill it.
Good morning, Chairman Yuler, and all members of the board. My name's Bridgette Barnes, I'm a local land use attorney and president of Right Hand Auburn. Leo McFarland is with me also, from Volunteers of America. The, there was a slight administrative snafu. I was going to try and actually do a PowerPoint, but I discovered that we got it in late to the county. So I have copies for the clerk and members of the board. I think there's one extra there, you may have one more than you need. But the purpose of the slideshow was first to introduce those members of the board that haven't come out and had a tour of the shelter. The back five or six pages covers the financial issues that I wanted to underscore. First of all, I want to thank the staff for all of the effort that they put in and working with us. There's been multiple meetings, both at the design and engineering level with Ken Graham and everybody in building, to try and work out the compromise proposal that has been submitted as a joint proposal to you. As was mentioned, when we discovered that the underlying, both wiring and plumbing necessary to build a new bathroom and office for the sheriffs, especially in light of the fact that it is anticipated that they're moving full-time out of the building completely, our original proposal that we brought to you in August didn't make sense for the short And so this does represent every, all of our desires for the next five months. The financial issues that are raised here were merely, were primarily to show you what Right Hand Auburn has actually raised in the community and the ongoing needs. The situation is that we have, we're obligated through the end of October at three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. We've raised just shy of two hundred and eighty. The balance of our obligation is covered by a personal line of credit signed by members of the board of Right Hand Auburn. We wanted you to have that information and also a breakdown of community support. You'll see that approximately seventy thousand in hard cash of the money that has been raised come directly from the churches of Placer County with a real focus on the Auburn area, and the balance from the building community. If you take it from building and business community, in that larger number, in the approximately two hundred thousand raised from the business community, that's folks that are members of Right Hand Auburn or supporters. Several of the local banks have been extremely generous. It represents doctors, lawyers, general retail businesses, some from the people that are out in the Airport Association, the, and I thought it was important for you to know how broad the level of financial support has been for this attempt to try and have a place where, well, as you know, we started out as an emergency homeless shelter, and it has grown and morphed into what is obviously the need, which is to have a twenty-four-seven service with occupational presentation. The financial analysis here was also worked through and reduced with Tammy and Jeff's help, and I believe is the best possible way to go forward. It transfers approximately sixteen thousand a month going forward to Right Hand Auburn, with the balance would be the contribution that is requested from staff on the board at this time, and takes us through March thirty-first. And I think those are the main things that I wanted to stress without specific questions from board members at this time.
Okay.
Leo?
Leo McFarland, Auburn, President/CEO of Volunteers of America. I wanted to give you an overview of what you created here back in June when you allowed Right Hand Auburn to open up this shelter.
Hold on, Leo, let me ask you, stop one second, we want to reset the clock on you, because I think Bridget's clock's about to run out on you.
Yeah.
I don't want you. All right, go ahead.
All right, we're pleased to report that this shelter has effectively served its role as an emergency shelter for forty-seven men and women since June first. We've seen over, I think the report shows through October, you know, a hundred and forty-eight men and women, and there's some breakdown in terms of who they were. Over eleven thousand meals served because this community reached out and stepped up, and the churches and the volunteers that prepared the facility and then prepared the food and delivered the food and served the food, provided exactly the sort of support and nurturing that the shelter needed to succeed. Operating fourteen hours a day, it's been able to create some significant changes in Auburn homeless population, which is much broader than the group that we've been serving. Some of the important things to note is that a whole series of, well, a whole series, approximately eight of the people that were using the homeless shelter and continue to use the homeless shelter are employed locally, are scattered throughout the community. You may not know that when you go shopping at different stores and different venues, but they're there, they're working, they're supporting themselves, preparing to move on. We've seen approximately seven of these individuals move into permanent housing. So this has been kind of the catchment place to allow people for, to stabilize, if only for a short time, in a matter of weeks or months, to stabilize, get cleaned up, reset themselves, and go out and effectively begin changing their lives. We We have a small community of individuals who remain in the shelter, who are just queued up for that next, that the next step. So your approval to allow us to continue to serve these individuals and maybe expand to the 24/7 model and provide that financing is going to be critical to furthering the successes we have. By bringing case management in, the support services necessary, we can move more of these folks, chronic homeless, out of homelessness into independent living. We know that, we concede, can succeed with that. We have been succeeding with very marginal, marginal support to date. The effort from a medical standpoint has been significant. Significant because many of the folks coming to us have medical issues that either have not been addressed, that we are addressing, and, you know, the cause and effect of the savings, the Placer County hospital system, Sutter Hospitals, I don't need to get into that. What I do know is that people who are suffering in need of care are getting that care, getting that attention, and it's not expanding to a bigger issue that requires significant surgeries and other hospitalization. So we are having a positive effect from, to the medical field with our presence and our activity. This is only going to continue, you know, this is the only shelter that I know in Northern California that also provides services for pets in the kennel configuration. I don't want to not gloss, I don't want to gloss over that fact. It's an important fact. It really creates a venue for someone to come off of the streets who otherwise feel they cannot be separated from their support animals, their pets, and it has done a wonderful job of sort of blending this population, creating a community that's been very successful and very supportive of itself. We're controversial in the fact that we exist, but we exist for a reason, and we're having very positive effects. And so you can be very proud of this investment you've made so far, and we're happy to take any questions related to the shelter.
All right. Board members have any questions or comments for either Bridgette or Leo? Supervisor Holmes?
Yes, I have a question for Bridget. What is your business plan? When you first came forward, it seemed that this was all going to be volunteers were going to, and supporters are going to donate, churches are going to donate. So what is your business plan ongoing? How are you going to be able to sustain that type of involvement from the community and the churches on an ongoing basis? Have you looked into that at all?
We're constantly reassessing that very issue. What we have discovered over time is there's a two-prong aspect, talking about the churches first, Supervisor Holmes. When we first got started, we were thinking that the churches, the portion that they would be providing would be primarily meals. It transpired quickly that we had underestimated the level of complexity necessary for a lot of the local churches to provide the meals at the shelter because of county regulation. For that reason, part of the funding that was coming in directly from the business community was recalibrated and pushed over onto the amount that had to be bought and brought in as full meals. That is changing over time. We're now up to 16 or 17 nights a week that, excuse me, a month that are being covered by the churches, and when I say churches, I'm also referring to community groups like Kiwanis, Elks, et cetera. That leaves the balance to be covered in hard cash by Right Hand Auburn, which continues to come in. For example, the last fundraiser, we raised about $75,000, the one that we had in September. But you are correct, it is going to be a continuous outflow of bringing in additional funding. The next stage, if we're allowed to go forward from where we are presently, the next stage is to institutionalize the fundraising. Because you're right, I have a business that I try to be a lawyer the rest of the time, and everybody else on the board is either a member of the cloth or a business person. So we're all just doing this volunteer. There's no staff, no paid staff, no nada. So we're all doing it ourselves, and that's probably an indication of why we need to really work on institutionalizing our fundraising. But the next step is to apply for the types of grants. We are going to be hobbled, it's, I just be honest, not just us, but every other group, because HUD, et cetera, is moving out of funding these kinds of shelters. We start in November. I'm already set for appointments with Sutter Health, because Sutter Health has indicated a willingness to provide some funding, but I have to go through their grant program. So that's what's going on now. So I'm trying to move personally from my focus on advocating for the shelter over to trying to bring in those kinds of additional funds, because I do see it as a situation where, based on what we expect to happen this winter, the 75 number that you're looking at in all of these proposals, Supervisor, is a placeholder. Nobody knows for sure how many people are going to show up at the shelter, you know, at night. So we believe these are reasonable numbers. We believe that the allocation that shows the 89,000 that will be contributed by Right Hand Auburn in the form of cash and food is a reasonable expectation, et cetera. But we won't have the first year's experience to consider until that's over, and that number, it may change. Anticipating, you know, coming back at the end of March and asking for another year's extension in the same location, for example, those numbers may modify. I can't, I can't tell you that right now. So some of this is, this is what we believe, it may be 100 people at the door. We do have a, we do have a land use approval to allow in 100 people at the door, but we'd have to have the funding to provide for them at that point if that occurred.
So it seems to me that this is a wishful thinking type of, and I'm surprised that as many business people are involved in your organization, wouldn't do a complete fiscal analysis about the ongoing sustainability of this project? And now you're coming to us to spend $225,000, $265,000 to keep your program going, which wasn't addressed, and I could figure it out, I could figure it out. I don't understand why your group couldn't figure that out, that it's not enough funding. You can't rely on volunteers and donations over the period of years or months to keep this program sustainable, and I'm surprised that this group hasn't been able to do that.
Well, a couple of things. Most important is that at the time that we made our original proposals, there were significant changes in the construction budget that was imposed by county regulations. We absorbed all of that, and that did bring us short. You are, but that would seem to me is not a question for the idea that the business people didn't consider it. You are right that we started this as a temporary emergency shelter. That was the intention. The services we are providing now greatly exceed what we had assumed when we first started. So both our services are more comprehensive and the costs that go with those are comprehensive. If you believe it's appropriate to say to a bunch of people who are in business, you're absolutely right, but at the same time, they wrote their own checks. They poured out their own treasure on this. So it seems a little bit rude to insult the money that they put in to try to make it go. You could certainly criticize us for not assuming that it was going to be a lot more expensive than it was.
Well, it just seems to me that you have enough people with business background with your organization that that would have been thought through fully. That's all I want to say about that.
Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah, thank you. I think these are questions for Leo. I had just a couple of clarifying questions. Your handout that you provided us indicate that roughly 9% of the individuals who have used the shelter are veterans. Are you working with our Veteran Services Officer to identify available services for those veterans specifically?
Yeah, we're targeting veteran services, not only locally, but even the veteran services that I operate. I've had, I've had support staff coming up from my Sacramento activities to interview the veterans. There are several that we've moved on into veterans programs, so they're out of our area and plugged into programs. We're working closely. DHA is providing staff on a weekly basis to come in and they interview everybody in the, in the facility and begin opening up caseloads. So we're being very proactive in identifying all those services that are out there for everybody, and we're really targeting veterans.
Okay. Another question I have is on the HMIS system. Is that something that you have implemented and you're using so that you're tied in?
We're set up for it. What we're doing now is the HMIS system is a three-page document questionnaire. So we're making sure that everybody that is in the shelter has that done, and then we can, we can plug that into the computer. So right now, because the access is limited to one individual, not any staff member who might be working graveyard shift input, we have to translate all of the data from every client onto these three pages, and then we dump it into the system, so.
And how is that process going?
We're, you know, we've got the in-house population of 47. We're targeting those. We're going back and reaching out to all those that we've served already, trying to gather up all the information, because you want complete information for that HMIS, which is pretty in-depth, and some of that is making sure that as people come back into the fold, you're updating that. So we're progressing on that data collection very well.
And I know that, because I see his posts on Facebook, that Dr. Kirby, City Councilman with the City of Auburn, is coming in and providing some health services. Are there, are there others who are participating in that, or are there others who are providing some of the services that Dr. Marbut recommended in his report?
Well, right now, other than, other than some of the people I'm bringing in from my own Volunteers of America staff, Dr. Kirby was invited in on several occasions for real severe cases, cases where we felt the tension hadn't quite been given at the hospital, and somebody was returned to the shelter in pretty sad shape, and so Dr. Kirby stepped forward and addressed those issues. So it's been pretty limited in terms of the need to call in medical attention. We have sent about five people or six people to the hospitals via the ambulance system because of chest pains or something significant where they, they had lack of mobility and couldn't get there on their own.
Okay. Any referrals to the hospital for any violent acts in the shelter?
Violent acts?
Yeah.
Not, not from in the shelter. I think there was probably one incident that happened about two months ago in a, in a block or so away where somebody got into a fight and was called and sent to the hospital, I do believe, but not from the shelter.
Okay. Thank you. Those are all my questions for now.
All right.
Thank you.
Supervisor Grant?
Yeah, I want to talk about the finance, financing for a little bit. Are you familiar with the report that came out in the San Jose Mercury News on September 15th with regards to Santa Clara County and San Jose, the city of San Jose, and what they're, what they're doing?
No, I did not read it.
I'm going to throw some numbers out here. The city of Santa Clara, city of San Jose and Santa Clara County estimate that the cost in global costs between probation, jails, police services, fire, emergency services, medical, runs about $520 million a year. That's the drain on the county and the city. Just this year alone, they, the county of Santa Clara upped their commitment from $100 million, $100 million. They upped their commitment 13 or 16.8 million, which includes permanent housing and sheltering services. All right? Their numbers, they have their study estimates that they started with seven, two years ago, 7,631 for the county, 4,770 for the city, at a cost of anywhere from $40,000 a person to $80,000 for the most extreme cases. That's where you get the $520 million, okay? My point is, is that the city of San Jose, city of Santa Clara, Los Angeles County, other counties, recognize that there is a problem here, and they need to get ahead of the curve. All right? Now, after we get through this discussion, we're going to talk about the results of that two years' commitment, and I think you'll find some very interesting numbers here. You know, people can spin doctor, or how many sheriff's office calls to the shelter or around the shelter, they can do, they can spin that all they want, but the fact of the matter is that the data does not lie. All right? It doesn't lie. Okay? All right. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other questions for the two of you, we're going to go ahead and open up to public comment. So this is a time when folks get to express their opinions on what's before us. I'd ask that, number one, we keep comments to the three minutes that we're allocating for each person. There's probably going to be a number of folks that are going to want to address the board under public comment, and so we want to be respectful of giving everybody the opportunity. And number two, please identify yourself for the record. Good afternoon, morning still. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for your time. I'm Scott Holbrook, a neighbor to where the shelter is. No spin, numbers are numbers. June was a record number of transient homeless-related calls. That record number was beaten in July. August was another historic record, 30%. You know, we can do numbers. There's much less than 9% of the people, based on Right Hand's Auburn's number, were veterans, maybe 1% or 2%. We underestimated the level of complexity. We had to recalibrate, constantly reassessing. If you were a bank, there's no way you would loan money on the information you provided. I know there's a ton of really, really compassionate, good people that are involved with this. You know, it's unfortunate when you speak out on this, you're attacked, as our, my own neighbor over there knows, called the racist bigot. Yes, we need to do something. I fully support it. I will join you hand in hand, looking to find a place. Hopefully, the dwellies, the Airport Association will open up their hearts and consider that location as a possible location. We need to do something. We need to do it right. We haven't been doing it right. You have no serious business plan. You have no idea what you're really getting into here. I know it feels good to want to help, but we have more and more problems than ever in our North Auburn communities, and the shelter is part of it. Right now, in your jail is a guy that failed to register as a sex offender. He's got caught with drugs on him, and he's a guest at the shelter. That's real. That's not made up. That's, that's what's happening. They've turned away numerous sex offenders. The other night, there was another sex offender that was turned away to the shelter that came from wherever into our neighborhoods. This thing, once again, is across the street from three elementary schools, daycares, preschools, 4-H club meeting halls. Let's just slow down, guys and gal. Let's keep it where it is. We have this little shelter by their own numbers. There's really no need to expand capacity. At the most, maybe one or two have been turned away on a regular basis. They mentioned eight people have been helped. Well, that's the same number they mentioned back in July. So, I mean, yes, it's okay. You guys approved a temporary emergency shelter. I know what the county's definition of that is, and let's stick with that, and let's work together reasonably, calmly, sensibly, put aside money. You guys can budget for the next fiscal year. You don't have to re-shift, do this and that. Serious money. Let's get a plan together. Let's do it right, and let's not put the families and children in danger. Last week, St. Joe's Schools had to call because of transient yelling threats on their property. Just not right.
Thank you, sir. Folks, let's go, go ahead and queue up a line here of people that want to speak. That'll help us, number one, identify how many people want to speak, and number two, just kind of move through it. Good morning.
Morning. Hi, my name's Lisa Lindgren. I was here at the last meeting, and I have a little concern that they're saying that the churches are behind them and helping them with this program, and my concern with that is, is I noticed on Saturday, they put together a group of homeless, and they feed them, and they shelter them at the church, at St. Joseph. What I do know is that Father Mike doesn't allow any of the homeless there during the week because of school. I don't understand if he's supporting, if the different churches are supporting this program, then why aren't they supporting it when there are children at the school? Not necessarily after school, but, you know, why they're there during the week? Why are they not supporting the shelter during the week where they have facilities they can cook and things like that is one of my concerns. The other thing is, I'm, sorry, I lost my train of thought. Oh, the gentlemen that you had here is a role model for the shelter last meeting. I was actually cornered out in the lobby when I left by one of the gentlemen on that they're not all sex registers. I understand that. He tried to tell me the ones that wear the ankle bracelets that are home arrest are the ones that are sex registers. He gave me line after line after line about anything that I would kind of bite at and believe in. I think the final thing was he had colon cancer and he needed help. My concern with that is their program's not working. If it was working, why would he corner me out in the lobby and address me and try to get me to believe some story he was coming up with? I just don't think this is working. I would like for you really to consider and look at this program, because not only is it not financially working, but it's not helping them to leave and better themselves. I have yet to see it, and I have the experience, because I live right down the street. I have yet to see it, and I have the experience, because I live right down the street. And like I said, I was cornered right after this, right during this meeting when I left. And I don't think a role model like that, that they're presenting, was appropriate at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name's Jerry Johnson, local guy. It's almost enough people here for a Winchester hearing. I want to echo another speaker. There are good people on both sides of this issue. The problem for me is that it's very poorly planned. If I were a businessman and I was coming to you and say, I want to start a manufacturing business in the DeWitt Center area, and I was going to employ people that had criminal history and personal problems that these transits do, you would make me go through an enormously lengthful approval process, which would fail immediately when I said these people were going to be within rock's throw distance of three schools and numerous youth groups. The project just wouldn't happen, and this project shouldn't either in this location. That's the problem with it. There's no mitigation proposed for these problems. It's going to continue to attract out, more and more out-of-town people. I've heard people say that there aren't any out-of-town people here, but there's more out-of-town people here that have come to this area since this program started than there were before. We have a major public safety issue here. I own some buildings next to Home Depot. I have transits living in my dumpster enclosures. When I ask them to leave, they're very threatening. They live in the landscape areas around my buildings. Those landscape areas are not their camps, they're not their dump sites, and they're not their restrooms. There's a pamphlet going around the county now, from County Sheriff's Department, I believe, is passing it out that says, you need to cut your bushes back. Well, that would be in violation of the approval process to build a building in the first place. It's just complete nonsense. When we ask these people to leave our properties, we're threatened. My tenants have been threatened. Now I've gotten to the point where I spend more time there than I ever expected, because trespassing is a misdemeanor. Not committed in a peace officer's presence, I do the arrest myself as a private citizen and have the Sheriff's Department transport them to the jail. I also have special needs tenants. I have two tenants that take care of many special needs adults. I have another tenant that counsels children in trouble. They're afraid to be outside. These people need to be outside every day, walked around and mobile, and it's just getting more and more difficult to do that. I've also been a peace officer for thirty-six years in this county. Part of it with the Sheriff's, most of it with the Sheriff's Department, and the last thirteen years with Auburn Police Department. I've always had this saying that we would be much wiser if we all saw your community through the windshield of a police department. Okay, a couple more seconds, please. Yesterday, I spent all morning in court testifying on a 290, which is a registered sex offender who was caught masturbating in the EV, next to the EV Kane campus in front of children. He's a registered sex offender, but wasn't registered with the City of Auburn where he was staying. Thankfully, a jury found him guilty. So I know my time's up. I just want to bring in one more item, and that's liability. It's very difficult to hold a county or a government agency liable for something like this. However, there is law, I've studied it now, that shows that if a government agency commissions or, in other words, approves an activity that becomes dangerous and causes public liability, it can be held liable. And I urge you, please reconsider this. This is the wrong place for this facility. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lori Fritzinger. And I'm here today because of what I see occurring on the streets of Auburn. I, and what I personally have been experiencing daily. It's pretty much changing the way that I feel about the safety of this area for myself and for my family and for my community. You know, I'm very concerned about the homeless problem, and I'm really concerned about how you're going to make decisions on how it's going to affect our lives here. I definitely feel that with this current shelter, it's temporary and it's run down pretty much currently. And I don't feel that it's cost-effective to invest money in this. If taxpayer wants, if taxpayer funds are approved, it needs to go right directly into a permanent location away from the main street, or main part of town. If you are considering this as a permanent location, this is not the place for it to be. And I know I won't support it, and I know several other people won't support it in this area. I am, however, very much in favor of a 24/7 shelter, but only if they can stay in place and have a place to stay during the day, and if they don't have to meander and wander around town, just as Marbut, your consultant, had recommended. Every day, I see numerous homeless people roaming around the streets. They're drinking. You can see them. It's blatant. It's not even like secret. And they're acting out. I have stories, I've written you guys letters, so, you know, in detail about what I've experienced. They dart out into traffic. And just the other day or yesterday, somebody hit one of the homeless people. I don't know to what severity, but that was, you know, pretty, you get pretty shaken up when you hit somebody. They are causing multiple problems, and for this reason, this shelter here, I don't think you need to put any more funds into it. I think it needs to move completely away to a different location from residential areas, schools, senior facilities, and main streets. As far as the services, I think that using less tax dollars and incorporating more grants and public or private funds would be more acceptable to a lot of us. The services that are currently being provided at this current shelter is not in accordance to your expert homeless consultant's recommendations, in which he said having a connected system of care is crucial for a successful outcome. Services need to be promoting individual transformation, and anything less, I'm almost done. Anything less, as it is now, is falling short. So the use of taxpayers' money is, and it's enabling bad behavior and is bringing in an influx, in my eyes, of transits. So we are clearly seeing something that's not healthy in our neighborhood. Please, I feel that we who live and shop and work in North Auburn right now, it's an unsafe environment, and this shelter is contributing to that factor. I just ask that you guys do not approve this as it stands right now, and that you'll consider waiting until we can find an appropriate spot, and then we can move forward on that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My name is Michelle Cowan. I am a North Auburn resident, proud to be in Placer County, and proud to say that I am an advocate for people who have disabilities, and that can be one of the causes of homelessness. As you all know, mental illness is very common in this community, or in this demographic. What I want to say to you today is that the discussion right now is whether or not to invest more than a quarter of a million taxpayer dollars on an unproven program at this point that did not go up for bid. If we're going to do a program, there are services already available. We should be working on consolidating those services and making a program that works, not just throwing money at a temporary shelter or a temporary solution. We need to consolidate all of the programs, like Piers, Health and Human Services, the Mental Health Adult Program. There are so many different programs right now that could be effective, and those tax dollars could be going to permanent housing solutions instead of this program that we don't have a proven track record or a business plan on, that we feel comfortable with. The taxpayers should feel comfortable with where our taxpayer dollars are going. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'll try and make this quick. I don't know how long she's going to last. My name's Julie Cannon. My husband and I moved here a few, four years ago. It doesn't seem too long ago. And we moved here because it seemed like a safe place to raise a family. And if I'm getting choked up, I'm sorry, but it's a little emotional. I have a heart to serve people. I think we all do in here. I think that helping people is a great idea, but I feel like this is not the way to go about it. The cart is before the horse, if you will. It hasn't been proven that'll work. And in the meantime, we are attracting transients from other areas that are not from here. And the numbers speak for themselves. Crime is up. The calls for service are up. I personally was attacked when I was pregnant with my daughter. I don't feel safe here anymore, and I want to be able to contribute to the community. I've worked full-time up until I've had her. And I pride myself on being a contributing person in the community, and I intend to continue. But I don't know how to even really help solve this situation. All I know is that it should be looked at very carefully, and I really ask you guys to do that. Look at it very carefully, make sure the numbers work. Make sure that it works. The location is terrible. It's attracting people here. You can see transients in the bushes everywhere you look, if you're driving through town. And the people that don't go to the shelter are the people that are, we should be afraid of. They're the people that choose this lifestyle. They're the people that don't intend on improving their lives or getting, straightening up or getting jobs. They just want to stay where they are, and it's scary. So if we could find another location, if we could find the funding and find another location, I would be the first person to volunteer. I would love to help, but this is not the solution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tiffany Oxley. I was raised in North Auburn. We have a family business in North Auburn, and at this point in time, my heart is broken. The lack of balance. For instance, I have had to call the Health Department for sanitation issues twice in one week. One was on the corner of Wells Fargo, Bell and Forty-Nine. I was accosted last week when I was there to do my business upon, by eight. Not all eight accosted me. It was one in particular. I had to call the sheriff. They cleared him out. I complained to Wells Fargo. They finally cut the hedges. There was a man literally living there, doing all of his business, and it was a health and safety issue. He's now on the corner of Target, doing the same thing. I had to call the Health Department yesterday. I've been accosted twice. There is no balance. And so how can this plan go further until we find balance? Laws, ordinances, the panhandling is aggressive, because I believe people are starting to wake up and not give. Anyway, I'm at a lack of words. So just from my heart, I'm heartbroken to see that North Auburn has turned into literally a toilet and a dump. And our North Auburn business, we just found out yesterday, there's a homeless person living under the stairs, which he's a smart man, because it's a nice, clean area, and he actually leaves before we get to work. But there has to be change, and the shelter's in the wrong place. You can't have it near hospitals and schools and churches. It's a public safety issue. And I've experienced it personally. Thank you.
Chairman Yulard, members of the board. My name's Tom Loop. I'm a lawyer here in Auburn for more than thirty years. I've been on the board of Right Hand Auburn since its beginning. And maybe, obviously, the board knows, but just for people here in the audience, what we started here last winter was, we came to ask for help with a temporary emergency shelter. Because we were members of the community that, like so many of us, saw people out in bad weather, people living out on Highway Forty-Nine, living in bushes, people that had disabilities, mental and physical disabilities. We saw veterans. We saw single women. And we saw people camping out on the lawn, and it was a blight. It was a blight on our community, is how we felt. And so we tried to put something together, and with this, with the approval from the board and help of the staff, we were able to establish a shelter that was an emergency shelter. And we spent a lot of money fixing it up. And I would remind everybody here that we fixed it up, notwithstanding the fact that for more than twenty-five years, people had been kept there in that building under the same circumstances, with no repairs, involuntarily, when it was a minimum security barracks. Notwithstanding that, we did the improvements. We spent the money for the improvements, and we were happy to start a shelter. Now, the need has been recognized as being more than we had before. And Dr. Marbut, this board hired Dr. Marbut to provide information and identify that there were real needs, and that these were people from Placer County, primarily homeless people from this county, that had needs. And so the mission did move. It did become bigger with some approval and some requests from staff and from this board to try to expand, try to consider, could we get more people in? Could we expand the mission? Could it be more than forty-seven? Could it be seventy-five? Could it be a hundred in bad weather? And that's now what we're trying to do. Unfortunately, that costs money, and we cannot do it ourselves. It was just that simple. We can't do it ourselves. We can't continue to pour thousands of dollars of our own money into it to try to expand it and to try to maintain it as it is. I understand people's concerns and their aversion to being approached and their fears. But the notion that every one of those people was somebody that was in the shelter, I think is just, it's just an erroneous assumption. If somebody's camping out in the bushes, by definition, they are not sleeping in the shelter. They are not sleeping in the shelter. The board has a difficult decision, has some clear choices, I think. And if the board chooses to not fund the shelter, then what you'll have is a twenty-four-hour, you'll have an emergency shelter available that our group fixed up at expenditures. It'll be fixed up and available for people in bad weather, and that will work, and you can have that, and that'll be the end of it. We'd like to be reimbursed for our contribution to create that shelter that this county did not have, but we'd also like this board to consider, and we know you will consider carefully doing more. What we're asking for, the amount of money, the quarter of a million, would be one, less than one, three, three thousand of this county's yearly budget. Thank you for your consideration.
Can you hear me? Okay. And listening to the concerns of the citizens that live around the shelter and in the city of, or the county of Auburn, in the Auburn area, I do understand their concerns. However, the shelter is not the cause of homelessness. Homelessness continues to rise as a result of many societal issues, whether it be loss of jobs, unaffordable housing, not enough affordable housing, even the fires that we have seen over the summer in that one area. There were over 200,000 homes destroyed. And the question still remains whether or not all of those people will be able to recuperate. How many of those people will end up on the street as victims? Not everyone that is homeless is a criminal or an alcoholic or a drug addict. I know several people that are using this shelter. One woman is in a wheelchair. I don't know if she has muscular dystrophy or something like that. I know another man who's on stage kidney failure, uses a wheelchair. There's other people in the homeless community that are very ill, and they have no place to go during the day or at night. But during the day, you see them lying in bushes because there is no bed for them to lay down in. And the fact of the matter is, a human being cannot just simply vaporize and disappear. Either you supply a place for these people to go, to get them off of the street, or they must be on the street because there's no other alternative. they must be on the street because there's no other alternative for them. And if this shelter disappears, there will be guaranteed forty-seven more people that are not on the street at night will be on the street. And let's look at the people, like the sex offenders, that are paroled into these areas. I know several of these people who are not even from this county, but they have been paroled into this county. And because they're sex offenders, they are not allowed to sleep in the shelter. They will not allow sex offenders in the shelter. These people have no other place to be on this, but on the street, or in jail. And incarcerating them or putting them in the emergency rooms, you know, when you find them sick on the street, or whatever, that's very expensive. The revolving door in the emergency room for this man that's got kidney failure when he cannot get into the shelter is an incredible cost to the taxpayers. So really, money-wise, it makes a lot more sense to expand the shelter. You know, if there's rules, if you don't want people coming from out of state, well then, you know, register the people that come in. Check ID. And, and make it clear that, you know, who you serve. But don't throw the baby out with the bathwater and put people that are homeless, many of them not even for their, you know, because of their own fault. Don't put them back out on the street so that they're now roaming the, you know, the streets at night. And, and let me finish, I'll be done in a second. You know, as far as defecating, urinating, everything, you know what? That's a human, basic need to do that. I mean, they're no different than anybody else. If they don't have a place to do it, well then, guess what? Your yard, or somewhere near your yard, is going to be the place that is gonna happen because it's just gonna happen. I recommend that you, that you take the work of these people, Right Hand Auburn, and go forward. They've taken the initiative, and they're not just proposing starting something new. They've already started. I say you just build on that. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Aaron Bromberg. I live in North Auburn, and I'm from the North Auburn Residents Association. When I walked in, there was a promotional piece for Placer County, and it looked beautiful. They did an excellent job on it. But that's not the reality in North Auburn. The reality in North Auburn is that there are a lot of new transients that are coming here, and they're attracted for several reasons. Number one, we have, was supposed to be an emergency temporary shelter, which has become an ongoing, endless program that they're asking for funding from the county. There's increased crime, there's increased calls to the PCSO. And we have to find ways to not only address the homeless problem, because I'm not anti-homeless, I'm anti-crime, and I'm anti-filth. And what I'm seeing on the streets is a result of the shelter not being run appropriately. They're shrouded in secrecy around their budget. We don't know why, you know, where the money is going. They're saying they provide services that I know for a fact they're not providing. They're saying that they screen people as they come in. I know for a fact that weapons have been in there in the last few days. They're not checking people as they come in. It's a danger to our community. I agree, we need to find a solution to help these people who really need help and who want help. And the people that we may be talking about out on the streets may not be the people who are in the shelter. But they're attracted here because we have no ordinances to protect our people who live here and who pay taxes. Yes, defecation and urination are a necessary human function and need, but there are lots of people, and those people that are homeless because of the fire have, are not out there defecating and urinating on the corner in front of Wells Fargo and Target. There are public restrooms all over the place. Why in the world do they have to litter and leave human waste all around our community? Not only am I asking you not to fund this, this what's supposed to be a temporary but ongoing shelter, I'm also asking you to do what's right for this community and put ordinances in place to protect the decency of this area. Again, I'm not anti-homeless, but I am against what's happening right now because it's wrong. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Well, at this point, good afternoon. My name is Annie Mager, and I'm a resident of North Auburn. And I have an updated version of what was submitted into your agenda packet that I'd like to have you take a look at.
Thank you.
And I also have one for, and Bridget, I think you have one as well. So basically, what I have given you is what the North Auburn community is seeing on a daily basis. As a North Auburn resident, a mother of a child who attends St. Joseph's, and a member of St. Teresa's Parish, I am also not against a homeless shelter, but not where it's located now, nor the way it is being operated without the oversight that Right Hand Auburn has previously presented to our community. These photos were taken near the shelter and in the North Auburn area surrounding the shelter, and depict what we are dealing with on a daily basis. In the agenda packet, there is a Placer County staff memo that has the following statement: Feedback from community members is mixed, with some supporting the shelter, while others objecting to its location, noting the perceived increase of homeless individuals in the North Auburn area, and the increase in the percentage of calls for service that involve transients and, as reported by the sheriff's office. While my experience and many other community members here completely disagree with that It is not a perception. What we are seeing is real. And as you can see by the photos, and at the last community's shelter meeting held on Thursday, September twenty-fourth, the sheriff's office presented the following crime statistics committed by the transient homeless population in North Auburn since the shelter opened. Eight point six percent in June, up to fifteen point one percent in July, twenty point six percent in August, and as of the twenty-fourth of September, thirty-one point nine percent increase. That is not perception, that is real. I want to offer a very heartfelt thank you to our sheriff's department, our EMTs, and the other agencies that are helping the community members responding to all these issues. They can only do what they can do with the laws that are in place. Since the DeWitt Lawn Camping Program, and then the opening of the shelter, this is what we see here in North Auburn every day. Transients camping on our streets, passed out in bushes, harassing us as we shop, defecating on both public and private property. They are getting drunk or high and causing problems around the schools near the shelter. Do you have any children in the schools in this area? I do. How is this acceptable for any of us? This board is making decisions, one more sentence, that are not well thought out for the long term. It is very sad to know that in this day and age, and I mean you, our policymakers, haven't done a better job, and we here in North Auburn are experiencing the fallout. Thank you.
My name is Kathleen Ridge. I live on Atwood Road, closest to the shelter. The original funding proposal that came from RHA had three options. None of them were acceptable to the board, so they were told to go run numbers again. Now they're asking for a quarter million dollars. You have a chance today, all of you, to get it right and be a leader to other communities, and especially to Placer County taxpayers. Today, all of you can make a difference and be innovators for the citizens of Placer County and for other communities, but it will take courage. Instead of giving RHA and VOA a quarter million dollars for five months only, make an investment with that money in purchasing land or a warehouse that's already in place in an industrial park, a location for a permanent twenty-four seven shelter. We can all work together, BOS, RHA, Placer County Communities, police, churches, businesses, hospitals, and the city of Auburn, to turn this shelter into a success, and everybody wins. What RHA is requesting is too great of an investment for a temporary shelter. With the current shelter model, I am respectfully asking you to turn this proposal down in its current location. Please don't pour more money in an aging building and ignore the logic of this kind of move, move. Don't use emotions to make your decision. It is my belief that the majority of the community understands the need for a twenty-four seven permanent shelter in an industrial area with all the services Dr. Marbut indicates. The current temporary shelter has not been a success in the North Auburn community, business owners, or the schools. I challenge any of you to go out to North Auburn community, especially Target, Safeway, Burger King, McDonald's, Michael's, police, et cetera, and you will hear a different story. The board is accountable to every Placer County citizen. So I ask you again, do not fund this current temporary model, but use that money to look for the future of a permanent twenty-four seven homeless shelter in an appropriate area, and most taxpayers will be on board with that. That will be a win-win situation for all of us.
My name's Lindsay Fitzgerald, and I live in North Auburn. I attended the last MAC meeting about the shelter, and as it was wrapping up, I had to leave early because I got a phone call from home that a homeless person had gone in through the gate of a fence that I built to keep them out of my yard, let the dogs out, and was screaming obscenities at my sixteen and thirteen-year-old girl. So I left the shelter, how ironic, or not the shelter, the meeting, to go home, met with the police. We were looking for this lady, and instead we found a transient sleeping two-hundred yards from my house, who was a registered sex offender. This is directly affecting my life. I've got a five-year-old, thirteen, and a sixteen-year-old girls at home. And as Aaron said, it, this shelter has become an attractant for other homeless people in our general region, and I don't feel safe in our community anymore. I feel like Auburn is such a wonderful town. I wish that we still had that town. But that's not what we are dealing with anymore. So I, I don't know what the solution may be. I also think that the shelter needs to have more regulations, not allowing people to come in there intoxicated. I asked them that question at the meeting, and they said, well, they do allow a certain level of intoxication. I feel, I'm not anti-homeless either. I would like to help people who want to help themselves. But I'm not willing to be an enabler to help people go out and cause problems and wreak havoc in our neighborhood, and then we provide a place for them to sleep at night. They want to go out and look for work and get back on their feet, that's great. But I do also agree that it needs to be in a different location. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, good mor, good afternoon to the board. Would like to, first off, acknowledge a thank you that you do care about the homeless. I have to say that. It's just, that warms my heart. Having said that...
Ma'am, I need your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Abigail Fawcett.
Thank you.
Pardon me. But having said that, I would like to try to offer up a few ideas. I don't know that they're actual solutions, but they're ideas, maybe toward solutions, and see if that can help. One of the first things I do believe is that we need to create an antecedent. Basically, an antecedent from the definition I understand means that you create an environment to either increase the behavior or to decrease the behavior. Now, when it speaks to, the first thing I think of is ordinances. If we speak to the ordinances, put in ordinances like Rockland has, I believe Roseville does. When Rockland, when I drive through Rockland, my hometown of nineteen years, and I've just moved up to Auburn, they pass through. They don't, I mean, they hang out in a few spots, but not like they do up in Auburn. Ordnances, like, right now, passed, done. That's the first target suggestion I have for the antecedent. The second one would be to recognize the expression, if you build it, they will come. If you build this shelter bigger, they're gonna come. And I would also thoroughly suggest that Placer County, however they have to do it, make a stance and say, don't send them here from other locations, because if we find this out, there could be repercussions to the counties that are doing that. Because there's been rumor that there's been counties that have been doing that. So that might explain some of our long-distance travelers that have arrived. I loved what Supervisor Duran was speaking to about the counties down there, and like LA counties, a hundred million dollars trying, they're in a state of emergency, trying to address the problem. My other thinking is, in terms of target possible solutions, is that the mentally ill people really should be able to, be eligible for SSI. Unless I don't have my understanding correct, they should be. So somebody on staff at the advocacy group needs to help get those funds matched up with them. Now, once a person has SSI, they also have eligibility for housing. Some of these individuals aren't going to accept that housing. What that happens is, at that point, you turn them into the Social Security Administration. You say, you know what? They're not using their money for food, shelter, and clothing as it's designated. So sorry. We have to hold them accountable to a program. And my belief is, in the target, you know, solution here, we agree, Placer County becoming the model, that we are going to only accept a certain amount that we can help, and the others, I, I think we're gonna have to just let dissipate away, perhaps. I don't know the answer to how to get them to go. I just know we can't let them stay, the ones we can't help. I, I just believe that with all my heart. There's a bigger picture in this. I would think, I would recommend that, that the board speak with your counterparts. You guys go to those Board of Supervisors, National Conventions, or whatever. I would absolutely get together with them and say, oh, sorry, can I have just a bit more?
Sure.
With them in regards to how their solutions are. Someone had shared with me an article about Salt Lake City. It was a really simply written article, though, of how they were solving it. They just pretty much said they provide male health services and housing that the homeless wanted to live in, and that was solved. And I thought, well, I'd like to know more. You know, they were comparing San, Salt Lake to San Francisco. Those are a couple of the things that I have in mind, but the last thing probably, I honestly think that you need to develop, and Placer County's done this before, a committee of a strategic, a homeless strategic advisory committee. In partnership with the advocates that are wanting to contribute, it's gotta be a workable spirit, and I, and I would actually love to have someone that was homeless at the, that the shelter could recommend would be a good candidate to sit on that committee, that maybe he was down on their luck and needs to help, but they, he can bring that spirit to the, to the, to the table. Somebody from North Auburn Neighborhood Watch, or a couple, just balance out however many we need to. And then also bring in, I'm sorry, I lost my thought. In other words, obviously, somebody maybe from here could spearhead it and see if we can't start kicking out the place and all those things. Right now, funding it is not a good idea. Go ahead.
Jeff, could you kind of speak to the issues, groups that we have here, just real briefly, as well as the SSI issue that she, this young lady was talking about?
Sure. We actually do have a staff member that works on connecting people with SSI. We also have a contract with Legal Services of Northern California to help with their appeals. So, so we, we do have that program in place.
Is that working? Is that appeal process working, or did you, or is the group looking at maybe hiring more of an advocate, attorney to, because...
The Legal Services of Northern California, those are attorneys.
Their attorneys, yes. Are they having success?
Yes, we are. We do have success.
Okay.
It's, it's, we need to, once we identify people as having SSI potential, people that have some sort of disability that they're, they're struggling with, then, then we work with them. It's a long process to get through the system, but, but we have had success with that.
What about the next company's...
Ma'am, at this point, we're gonna, I'm gonna ask that we suspend and move on to...
Yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to give the second part of that. That's no problem.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman, for indulging.
Good morning. I'm Ron Denton. I'm a longtime Placer County resident, lived and worked here my entire life. First off, I'm not against the shelter or homeless people. I'm a caring, compassionate person, as Supervisor Holmes will attest to. This past Sunday, I was a client at the shelter. It was between myself and another gentleman. I let him go first. I weren't sure who arrived there first. Let him go first. They checked his ID. He came back a two-ninety registrant, so he was declined. So there's one bed left. I was able to take that bed. I commit clear, commit clear, obviously. I was not given any rules whatsoever until about eight-thirty, nine o'clock at night. I wasn't asked if I had any medications, drugs, weapons, nothing. I actually had pepper spray and a taser that shoots at a projectile. Was never checked, searched, asked about any of those things at all. For most of the clients, it was like a free-for-all. They just walked in there and just plunked down the couches, beds, et cetera. Not once was any services provided to me, housing, drug, alcohol, treatment, nothing whatsoever was offered to me or left out. whatsoever was offered to me or left out in plain view. Let's see here. I'm not ADA person, but in my eyes, the bathrooms are not ADA compliant whatsoever. I feel if we put more money into this facility, it's going to be a total waste. And what else here? Yeah, just, I was really surprised. The staff was good, I was, the staff was good. They were helpful for the most part, but they just didn't offer anything. So I just hope that you, you know, do the right thing and don't support this, the shelter. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Dan Amaral. I've been a longtime resident of Placer County in public safety for over 30 years. The last 12 or 13 of those have been as a paramedic up here in Auburn. When the shelter came, when the shelter was first established several months back, I've noticed an influx of homeless people from out of the area. They, you know, they were, they heard about the homeless shelter and were, just came to the area. One night, a couple months after the shelter opened, my partner and I were posted in our ambulance, clearly labeled, in a well-lit area, and we were assaulted by a new transient to the area. He, my partner, immediately took action on the individual and chased him away while I was on the radio calling for sheriff backup. Now, if this occurred at the time when we were actually being dispatched to a call, say, a loved one of yours needed some medical help, we were, at that time, at night, we were the only ambulance in Auburn. So if we were committed already to this violent act, the next ambulance would have been coming from below Newcastle. If it's a life-and-death situation, minutes matter. Please take this into account, that the homeless shelters do draw people up to the area. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you.
Good day, Supervisors. My name is Patricia Johnson. I live in North Auburn. I'm a new resident, only been here 13 years. I'm a taxpayer, and I've been attending the community meetings around the shelter. I wanted to point out that for a number of years, there was a homeless coalition that existed, and they came up with a 10-year plan, which we haven't seen be realized, but within a, less than a year, a community-based group has done something that they have reported has been positive for some individuals. I know that homelessness is a large problem, but I don't think the shelter is the cause of the problem. I think it's part of the solution to help the homeless who are coming to our community. We can't deny that there are homeless out in our environs who are potentially defecating, creating problems in our public safety, but we need to do something about that. We shouldn't abandon the shelter. Again, it's not the cause. I think it is part of the solution, and Dr. Marbut would certainly, I think, agree with that statement. I just want to point out that it's been estimated that it costs $31 a day to support someone in this shelter. Two years ago, the Sheriff's Department reported that it cost $136 a day to keep somebody in our facilities, which is more cost-effective. Please support financially this effort in our community. Thank you.
My name's Dan Appel, and I'm a North Auburn County resident and also pastor of a church in this area, and I thank you very much for the opportunity. I'm speaking for both myself and Mike Carroll, who is sick enough, he may be having surgery. So if you'd allow me, just indulge me just a little bit over three minutes, I'd sure appreciate it. I think everybody in this room, no matter what side they are on this issue, will admit we have a serious problem. That's not the issue. Everything that's been described by everybody is correct, and we can all admit it's increasing. Part of the reason is because prison and probation have gone through some transformations, and unfortunately, we've inherited people from all of those. But the greater cause is that proportionally homelessness is going up. Las Vegas, if you look, if you do just a Google search, has just under 10,000 homeless people. Somebody mentioned Santa Clara County and the money that they're spending. The city of Los Angeles is going to spend this next year between $1 and $2 billion. Not million, billion dollars, according to Google, trying to solve their homeless problem. It's increasing, but it's increasing not because somebody's moved a shelter to town or not because of anything else, it's increasing because the economic situation in the United, good old United States of America is changing. And we wish it wasn't so? Somebody said, "Well, why aren't other churches and others doing something?" I can only speak for several of us. My own church provides food, clothing, and shelter materials for at least 700 people a month, or families. We provide free medical care for those who can't access it in other areas. We're all doing our very, very best. It's been a long-term problem in our area. Somebody mentioned the county study that was done for at least 20 years. There's been a county study saying, "We need to solve the homeless problem, we need to do something about it," and for all practical purposes, for 20 years, nothing has been done. Now, you can pony up some little tiny exceptions, but for all practical purposes, very little or nothing has been done. We've talked, and the time has come to realize that talk is not enough. The county with limited financial resources, through helping the Human Services, has done a tremendous job, but as we all know, they've had to shut their medical and their dental clinic down because of a lack of funding, and they are wrestling with the mental health So, a local group of businesspeople plus professionals and some helping agencies initiated an attempt, and for the first time in Placer County, have been successful in showing that something can be done. It was intended to be temporary until something permanent could be accomplished. The idea was to provide a stopgap for two or three years until we could find a place to put a permanent shelter. Now, that's not as easy as it sounds, because every time you talk about putting a shelter anywhere, the neighborhood rises up and says, "You can't put it in our area." And in fact, there, it puts a county in a real awkward situation, because there are some counties right now that are being sued because they're not doing something tangible for the homeless problem. Successfully sued. Mr. Holbrook says he'd be willing to help, which delights me, because everything I've heard about him has been negative and critical, and I appreciate that publicly he has volunteered to invest time, energy, and finances in looking for a permanent solution. I believe everybody involved with Right Hand Auburn is excited to hear his offer, and I hope and believe it's sincere. So many here have said that they care, but maybe the time has come, for those of you who say you care about the homeless problem, to put your money and your time where your mouth is, as the people who have been involved in the shelter have done. They have invested their time and their money and their energy in spite of huge criticism. I consider Jim Holmes a friend, so I hope my next remarks can be taken as one friend talking to another. But Jim, the businessmen involved in this may not have done things perfectly, but at least they've done something. I always figured it's better to do something and maybe not do it perfectly and try to improve it than not to do anything at all. And I love you, man. I care about you very much, and you have gone around in a lot of very visible places and expressed your interest in the homeless problem, but when it comes down to it, you've done precious little. And the time has come for action, which brings us to today. Virtually none of the money that's been talked about is for infrastructure. The improvements left to be done on that building are relatively small, $30,000. All of the rest of it are to be invested in a program to try to help people. All the discussion about, "Why are we making all these changes in the building?", virtually none of the money that's being asked for is for infrastructure. It's being asked to fund what is acknowledged by everybody on the West Coast to be the most effective money-wise and program-wise program to deal with homeless, Volunteers of America. If I were sitting here listening to some of the things that have been said, and I were Leo, I'd be brokenhearted, because folks, they're doing a terrific job. Are they doing a perfect job? No, but none of us would do a perfect job either. Isn't that right? But they're doing their best. I look at the businessmen and the professionals who have invested incredible amounts of time and energy and money in the face of incredible criticism, and I don't understand it. I do not understand the resistance. The homeless, including the 290 guys, the sex offenders, were in your neighborhood before the homeless shelter was established. I know for a fact, I...
Sir, I'm going to ask if you...
Okay, I'm hurrying.
More, sir.
But I'm speaking for two people, remember?
I understand.
Okay.
We can all speak for our friends.
That's, that's, no, no, excuse me. Conclude your remarks, please.
The homeless were there beforehand, the sex offenders were there in the bushes, they were in the bushes around my church, they were camped all around my church. Every morning when I arrived at church, they were sleeping in front of the doors. I understand what you're saying, but we've removed 45 people at least from the neighborhoods and businesses to a central place, a block from the sheriff's office where they can be watched. If we do not continue, and there are those in the Right Hand Auburn Board who are saying, "If this is turned down today, let's just walk away and forget it." You ever heard of a flea circus? They used to train fleas and have flea circuses. You know how you train a flea to be in a flea circus? You put them in a mason jar and put a lid on it. Even a flea starts jumping up and down, trying to hit their head on the lid of the jar. After a while, even a flea can figure out, "You only want to jump so high, or you're going to have a headache." The people involved in Right Hand Auburn are about to the place where they're saying, "It's not worth the headache, and you'll have them all back in your neighborhood." If that's where you want them, I can't figure out why, and that's the thing, and I'll close with this, I cannot figure out why a group of intelligent, logical people would be here requesting this commission to put at least 45 more homeless people back in their neighborhood. We all recognize we need a permanent shelter, and we all need to work for it, but in the meantime, why do you, why do they want them back in their neighborhood? I'm not the brightest penny in the drawer, but I can't figure out why on earth a person would request you to add more homeless to their neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Victoria Connolly, I won't reiterate a lot of what has been already said. However, I would reiterate what Larry Farina said a while back, and congratulations to this Board for being the first Board in the history of Placer County to do something about the homeless in our area. We didn't make this up out of whole cloth, it was a response to the homelessness that we already saw in our neighborhood. A little trip down memory lane, Richard Anderson, in 2014 April, held a meeting at the business park at the airport. Shortly thereafter, carte blanche permission was given to homeless to camp on the lawn at DeWitt. Correlation does not equal causation. The shelter simultaneously was approved and came to be, yet we still had people on the lawn, possibly from out of the area, but who felt safe and who no longer feel safe since they've been dispersed back into the bushes. I had a chance to visit with Dr. Marbut when he came here for a fundraiser, and I stood in the shelter while he visited there, and I cannot tell you the number of people who rolled in in wheelchairs, walked in in walkers, one laid in bed with a diabetic wound. Those were the people that I saw being served. And I will remind you what your SB2 zone is, and that is, a 60-bed shelter could exist in any multifamily residential zoned area in our community. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Greg Sorrello. I'm a North Auburn resident, and Pastor Dan took all my thunder. He spoke much more eloquently than I could, but I, so I'll be brief. I want to say that this shelter is not a fantasy, we all know that, everybody here knows that, we agree, but it's a beginning, like Pastor Dan said. This has been discussed for a long time here. I'm a fairly new resident, but I've heard, and there are a lot of people in groups that have come together to discuss it. This is the beginning of the Marbut recommendations, basically. It's not what he would propose, yet at the same time that this shelter is here, as Mr. Brown pointed out, there are groups convened to implement the Marbut proposal, looking to the future. One woman mentioned about investing, paying into an aging building. I look at it as investing in the lives of people. It seems incredible to me also that people are implying that it's not appropriate for this Board to put money into this. I think it would be highly appropriate. You guys invest in a lot of programs in HHS for people who are underserved. This is the same thing. I wish Mr. Duran was here. He mentioned that other, ah, that was good, good entry. As Mr. Duran said earlier, other governmental entities are investing a whole bunch of money. We're talking about $31 a person here. I believe you mentioned $40,000?
That's the average cost.
Average cost per person?
The more, the chronic people can...
Go up to 80.
Their accounting is plus $80,000.
$80,000, $40,000, $31. I don't get it. This is a great investment for you guys. Not only is it appropriate for you to be involved financially and other ways, I think it's responsible for you to be involved. And the impact, Pastor Dan talked about that, 47 to 100, depending on how many we have this winter, back out on the streets. I don't get it either. Thank you.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Jerry Mifsud, and I'm a member of a committee that's bringing back the lights. Frank Calibert's lights in the bailhouse are going to return this year in the fairgrounds. But this is about the shelter, our homeless, and transients. And I'm afraid that the high concern that we have about the transients in this town is, has to be addressed, there's no doubt, but we're bringing in the shelter and our homeless people. I haven't heard anyone saying anything that shelter is exclusive for our homeless people. But you bring in the transients who create the greater problem and talk about that, which I understand that, but you can't link it to the shelter. If you're saying that the shelter brings in the transients while when they get into town, but when they get to the shelter, they're turned away. This is a greater problem, and that has to be addressed, but to link them together and demonize them or fear monger, create a fear about our homeless, our Auburnites, that we need to help, we want to help, to bring in the transients and have a litany of all these complaints, which are legitimate, but they're mixing two different issues here, and what it does is overshadows all the good work that this town is trying to do. Now, you open, you open up the door to Dr. Marbut, you spend $50,000, $60,000, and for what reason? So he can inform you about something that he is more understanding about, about the homeless issue. So we advance our temporary emergency shelter, because that came in during the winter. You had the Welcome Center quickly try to, we realized that we had to do something. So you do that. You also, in the grounds out here, the county grounds, you open up a camp. That was good, but... That was good, but you saw the problems that that created. And that brings in transients. The smallest amount of people are our homeless, and they're getting to that shelter. For anyone to go into that shelter and infiltrate it, I believe had an objective in mind before they entered. As, this shelter is in your district, Supervisor Holmes. It's in ARD Scott Holbrook's district, and you don't want it. You know, nobody's really gonna want a shelter in their neighborhood. If you go to each neighborhood and ask them, well, they're all gonna say, "No." You want it at the airport? Well, guess what? We have it here now. And the best thing is to support it. The work of Leo McFarlane and Bridget Barfarms, nobody's getting paid. So we should support it because it's already enacted. To backpedal and back away from it, and then bring in the transients that overshadow our homeless, that's fear mongering, and we shouldn't do that. But anyway, thank you so much. And let's keep supporting this shelter and get the community, more of the community behind it. Thanks a lot for your time.
Gary Mapa, Applegate. I've been told that because I'm from Applegate, I really shouldn't be participating in what we're doing, because I don't see it. I'm not here to deal with it. So technically, I've been told I have no right to even talk about it. You already know the history. August 2014, we recognized an opportunity to take advantage of an old building that housed the prisoners for I don't know how many years in a condition that was probably deplorable. We recognized that if we didn't take the opportunity to press for use of that for a temporary shelter, that that use would be gone. And there's no place that you could do a shelter as quickly as we did. So here we are, going into our fourth month of, what, thirteen months from when we first conceived that it was possible to develop a temporary shelter. The whole purpose was to get to the point where we could get the county's support to get on track, to look for a more permanent solution. The shelter was never intended to be here four years, five years, or beyond that. You brought Marbut in. He gave some pretty good suggestions. And now we're to the point where we can meet his goal, a recommendation of a twenty-four-seven. There's no blueprint to what we're doing. A ninety-day pilot program really didn't give enough time to sort through all the different obstacles, ideas, innovations, and discoveries of what needs to be done to get it to the next level. Today, we witnessed a great portion of our community that I agree with. I don't disagree with the panhandling, the transits, and the stuff that's going on in North Auburn. That's serious stuff, regardless of the shelter, whether the shelter attracted one percent, two percent, or five percent of that group. I went out there and I personally helped clean the campers off of DeWitt. A lot of them are Auburn people, and a lot of them, when I asked them, "What brought you here?", it's because they had a place they could go and camp. They didn't come here necessarily for the shelter. Maybe some of them did. A lot of them right now are up in Colfax, camping at the campground in Colfax. And, you know, that's just where they had to go. Now you've got people out in the thickets going back to where they needed to go. It's just tragic. So what I'm not recommending anything, but from this meeting, I take that we've got community members here that are asking you to do something. And what I'm hearing them ask is beyond the shelter. I mean, the shelter's the topic of conversation, but it's, what do you do beyond the shelter with the transits that are here, with the homeless that are here? What are we gonna do? We need these people to meet, come together with us. I've gone to these meetings. I'm committed to beyond the shelter. I'm committed to see what we can do collectively as a group and collaborate with Health and Human Services, with the Home Management Information System, anything it takes to move this forward, anything it takes to get through the next two or three years to where you can actually maybe solve part of the problem. You're not gonna solve the whole problem. But if we can create some type of pathway to get some of these people to the help they need, time to do it now. You missed this opportunity. We're gonna be talking about this three, four, or five years from now, maybe ten. We'll do another ten-year plan.
Thank you, Gary.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm gonna, that's precisely, that's precisely what I'm gonna do now. Thank you. So there are three people that I see left. Is there anybody else that wants to address the board? And we'll hear from these three folks, and we will have been about two hours on this, and hopefully our board will make a decision one way or another after that. Yes, ma'am?
Good afternoon. My name's Allison Gallard. I live very close to the shelter. And I'd like to, real quick, touch on why Ronnie made the visit to the shelter undercover the way that he did. It was not, there were no bad intentions. The reason was, VOA, Right Hand of Auburn, has been hiding the ball the entire time. They don't want to allow any of us that have had questions about their check-in process, their weeding out of sex offenders, or any facts of how they run their shelter. They have not wanted anybody to know that, under the guise of it's a HIPAA law. Well, that covers medical, not a shelter presence. They, you know, Leo McFarlane has been asked questions in the MAC committee meetings, and he'll shrug. He doesn't know. And so Ronnie went in to find out facts, and we did find out that no weapons were checked for in bags. ID was checked, hit or miss. Ronnie's from Rockland. If they're saying that this is our Auburn homeless that we're taking care of, he should not have been allowed. You know, Leo said that they vouch, let the other residents, homeless members, vouch for the guests' identities. There's no IDs, and if it was me, if I was homeless, I'd lie. I'd say I was from Auburn. They've got great things going on here. So those were the reasons why we wanted Ronnie to go in, and so we could get the honest truth. The shelter is not in an okay place. It's right smack dab in the middle of children, families, elderly. It's not appropriate. And I think everybody here would be willing to support a shelter that it was in a more appropriate location, far away from children. And while the shelter residents might not be the sex offenders or the transients on the street that are drinking and attacking us by day and, you know, literally going to the bathroom on our street corners, the shelter and the handouts that go along with it, and the kind-hearted people that give money are the ones that are drawing transients here. We've heard stories that transients are telling each other to come to Auburn, because our streets are paved with gold and innocent, nice people that want to help out, which is fine. But when you give people money like this, they go and they do drugs, they get alcohol, and then they're road hazards and attacking our children because they're under the influence of god knows what, and that's the problem here. And I think the shelter would be supported if VOA and Right Hand would hear our concerns about the location. As far as funding in the current location, why pour good money after bad? I mean, they've spent two-hundred-plus-thousand dollars renovating an ancient building that, to my knowledge, was slated for demolition. So why not get a nice, new, shiny building in an appropriate location and not spend money revamping an old, tired building and put it towards helping people? That's their goal. So, thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Mary Najjar. You've seen me before. I've come here to talk. It's no secret that I support Right Hand Auburn. I do support the shelter. I see something in common between everybody here today saying that they do care about the homeless, and I also hear them all say that they would support a shelter. So that is a wonderful first step to go forward. We have a shelter in place. I know it's working from my experience. I've been involved in it. I go with my family, as a matter of fact, and with my two children, and we go and feed the homeless once a month. I've seen the faces change in there, and when I've asked where the ones that I've seen last time have gone, they're not there because they found a job. My understanding is with their first paycheck, they're able to buy a bicycle so they can drive and go to their new job. So I know for a fact that it's helped some people. I've heard people say that were even against it, say, "Well, if it can help change the life of one person, then I would be for it." Well, I've seen eight of them not there anymore because of that. I've heard somebody mention their children go to St. Joseph's School. My children also go to St. Joseph's School. I know there's been a couple of incidents with some homeless person on the lawn a couple of days ago on the church yelling something. I'll tell you the truth. I don't worry about the homeless people as much as I worry about guns in my kids' school. That worries me a lot more. When I drop off my kids in the morning to school, I don't worry about a homeless guy here or there. What I worry about is a kid coming with a gun and shooting my kid in school and teachers. That's what I worry more about. The important thing we have to always remember is that since day one, we've always said this shelter is temporary. That's what we all have to remember. It's temporary. It's not permanent. And while we are working towards a solution to have a permanent one somewhere else or to fund one, we have to support this one. Because for everybody who's worried about them going to the bathroom on the corners and behind the hedges, well, there'll be another fifty out on the streets doing that more. So we have to support what we have until we find a permanent solution, because we all know there is a problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Sandy Amara, and I'm a resident of Placer County and a member of Right Hand of Auburn. I support Right Hand of Auburn. I support what you're doing, and I encourage you to keep moving forward, as emphasized by our group. One thing, I'm not gonna reiterate all, everything that everybody has said in support of this project, but I do want to say, it's been about two or three weeks. I went into the shelter to serve a meal, and I just want to say that I was greeted with a group of people, some elderly and some young. I was very surprised to say there were young people there. And they were very well-dressed. They were very polite. They were orderly, and I was very impressed. At the end of the meal, they said, "Thank you," and I was very impressed. And more importantly, I was born and raised in this town, and I saw individuals in there who I grew up with. I saw individuals, and I spoke with individuals who graduated, or didn't graduate, from our schools in this town, in this county. So, or town, Edikane, St. Joseph's, Maydoo, Chana, Placer High School. So, again, what you're doing is a wonderful thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. That concludes our public comments. So at this time, we're going to bring it back to the board for additional thoughts before we take any action. Supervisor Holmes?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to respond about the precious little I've done for the homeless. The past eleven years, I've been on the Board of the Salvation Army. I contribute to that monthly, and I also, that provides food and assistance for rental assistance and utilities to keep people from being homeless. For the past eleven years, I've been on the Board of the Gathering Inn, which has kept, put more than two-hundred-and-fifty people back into housing. Personally, in my apartments, I had a young man at the church that I attend was homeless. I let him live in one of my studio apartments at no cost till he got his life together. I had a lady that was displaced by a flood. I let her stay in my apartment at no cost. That cost me more than, lost ten, more than ten thousand dollars in revenue. So I take exception when I've been asked, said that I've done precious little. So please accept that. Now I want to go back to Marbut's homeless forum. In February, February nineteenth, 2015, my friend, Mr. Holdeman, asked Mr. Marbut about the feasibility of a temporary shelter in the barracks at DeWitt Center. His response, temporary could be as much as twenty-two years. His response as well was, may make the problem worse. I heard that. I wrote it down. Evidently, everybody wanted to ignore that fact. But you can see that what has happened is the problem is worse. All you have to do is look at these photos of the stuff in, the trash and the amount of homeless people that have grown. I live out there. I see it. There's more people there, and I think the homeless shelter, well-intentioned, but it's caused a bigger problem. I'm not against a permanent homeless shelter, but not where it is. I've got, actually, the principal of Rock Creek School, the school has been out of this. They don't want to get involved in this discussion. But at long last, the principal of Rock Creek School sent a letter to us. There are quite a few homeless individuals that we recognize, as Sandy does, I do. I went to school with some of them, as they have lived in the North Auburn area for years. However, there seems to be a large increase in the homeless population, and we're seeing larger groups in the area. I am hopeful that a solution which significantly decreases the number of homeless people in North Auburn is implemented, and that this solution does not include opening a shelter so close to any school setting. We had people from St. Joseph's Church here that are concerned about that. I know two people that pulled their kids out of St. Joseph's Church because of the growth of the homeless issue. This is a public safety problem, and I'm not gonna start throwing county dollars at it for a temporary solution. It's caused more of a problem than it's solved. That's my, and I'm not gonna support the item. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Supervisor Duran?
Yeah, you know, I kind of feel like Gary Mapa, you know, when he says that he shouldn't, you know, he feels like people tell him that they don't talk, shouldn't be talking about it. And I've had a lot of people from the Auburn area say the same thing about me, because I'm down in Roseville. But the fact of the matter is, we've got a problem in Roseville, and we're addressing that, and I've got some long-range plans in the works for that as well. I do want to say, first and foremost, that I appreciate everybody that came from the neighborhood to come and talk, because I think you, in having this discourse, it's very important that we all understand. And I do appreciate the fact that somebody did go in there and raise the question as to what type of checks our people are doing, because I think that's real important for us as supervisors to know. And I'm gonna be really, really stern and say that, you know, if that kind of stuff is going on, you know, that's gotta stop. You know, we have to have checks, and, you know, I'll be talking to Volunteers of America about that later. But the fact of the matter is that we have a problem. And I want to get to the numbers again. Santa Clara, San Jose, five-hundred-and-twenty million dollars a year. Santa Clara County, one-hundred million dollars a year they're paying to deal with this problem. The reason that I bring these up, you probably, people in here probably don't care about Santa Clara and San Jose. But the point is, is that this could be that in the future. That's why I bring it up. And, you know, just to show you how important it is to me and how I do listen to you, there was a young lady here, and I think she's sitting right over here, that stood up and told me about her daughter and how the homeless had an effect on her. And I went into the last meeting not wanting to do, wanted to take it slow. But I came to the conclusion after that testimony that it was more important to have a twenty-four-seven situation where people are getting treated than it is to let them go out during the day and go possibly directly into your neighborhood. And that's the question that everybody needs to ask. And I think, I think Father Dan, Pastor Dan, hit the nail on the head. If you take this away, they're gonna be back in your neighborhood. And what responsibility do I have, you know, to stop that? Results, okay? We talked about, I talked about the results piece with regards to San Jose and Santa Clara. They were behind the curve too. And now you're seeing, their total populations for San Jose is one million. Santa Clara, including San Jose, is one-point-seven million. Over the la, over two years, their numbers went from seven-six-thirty-one in the Santa Clara County down to six-five-five-six, which is one-thousand-seventy-five people they took off the street and put them into housing. That's a total savings of over forty-three million dollars. Forty-three million. Not my money, but everybody sitting in this room, or sitting in their county supervisor's room, that's forty-three million bucks that they saved over the course of those two years. San Jose-- San Jose went from 4,770 to 4,063. A total of 707 people were taken off the street and put into housing, all right? Now, that's a conglomeration of shelters and permanent residential housing and treatment and all these other things that they're putting in to reduce those numbers. The total number is 14%. 14% over two years. The seven people of the 47 that are in the shelter that found permanent housing, that reflects 14%. If those numbers are true, they've already, they've already met the San Jose and Santa Clara number. And I hope that we can continue going down this road to try to address this. Now, first and foremost, my, the only reason that I voted for this in the beginning is because it is temporary. Temporary. I have no intention, and I don't think anybody on the board here has any intention of building a permanent facility on the campus, all right? And that's where you come in to help us during this transitional period to figure out where it goes. And I'd like to talk, to have Jeff kind of give us a little update as to where we are in those discussions, because those discussions are happening now. We're not resting on our laurels and just saying, you know, this is just a Band-Aid and we'll come back to it later. We're actually addressing it now. Jeff, can you kind of inform people what we're doing?
So we've actually convened four working groups. One is to work on the homeless management information system, to try to make that a real-time case management tool. We have a group convening in Auburn that is looking at 24/7 shelter service options in Auburn. We have a similar group in South County, and then we have a group that's looking at permanent housing options. In terms of the group that meets in Auburn, we've met three or four times now. The group seems to be in consensus that there is a need for a 24/7 shelter in Auburn, North Auburn area. We've started to look at sites, and at our last meeting, which was last week, we actually, a number of sites that looked promising, we found out that they were in the overfly zone of the airport, which would most likely preclude them from locating a shelter in that region. So now that we know that, we're starting to look at areas south of Bell Road that would not have that constraint placed on them.
So we are doing things for a permanent shelter?
Correct.
Okay. The final thing that I want to say here, and that is winter is coming, you know, and that's no pun intended for the GOT people. It is coming, and we have to do something about that. And I think the responsible thing in order to address this now for the short term is to fund the $225 and change. Now, I want to contrast that with the money that we provided for the senior center at $500,000 that we're on the hook for. $500,000, all right? And then we dedicated another $100,000 to a feasibility study for a multi-use, so that's $600,000 that went to these things that are nice, the things that, you know, we want, all right? But this is something that we need, folks. This is something that we need, and this is something that you need for the long term. Because there is a long-term solution out there, and I know that you're scared. I know that you're scared, because you see these folks, because they're scary. I've been there. I've lived in neighborhoods with these folks. You know, I grew up in South Central Los Angeles in Watts. I know exactly the type of people that you're talking about. And I have every confidence in the county, I have every confidence in our HHS department and our sheriffs to minimize the risk as much as they can. And I'm with you, and I think this is the time, this is the time that we need to move forward with this to address it. If we don't, it won't be addressed. I can guarantee you that it will not be addressed, and five years from now, the problem is going to be worse. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Supervisor Duran. Supervisor Wiegant?
I actually have some questions. One of them Supervisor Duran just essentially asked, but I'll just develop it a little bit, that has to do with site selection.
So the site selection work that you're doing specific to this question, so Auburn area and not South Placer is another issue for which I have a concern also, but if we were to go forward today with this notion, would you expect that we would fully have site selection alternatives thoroughly vetted and available to us in a timeframe such that if at the end of March, we still wanted to have this kind of commitment to this business, you would have a site set of selection alternative and recommendations that would come forward with that?
We're certainly going to go through that process to identify sites. What we're finding is that in the unincorporated area of the county, the only zone where shelters are allowed by right is multifamily residential, and we have not been able to locate any site in that zone. So any sites that might have some potential would most likely require some type of rezoning. So we will look at those sites, we will bring them forward, and of course, we have not contacted any owners yet. We're just looking to see what might be feasible, and that will be the next step. But we'll bring all that information back to your board before the end of March.
So obviously, in terms of the lead time, if we were going to discontinue this commitment in March, we would need time prior to that, obviously, to be able to make the move and have that put in place.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it certainly will require time. Some of the sites might be raw land, other sites might have buildings on them.
Right.
Whether or not the building is suitable for a shelter, might need some modifications, might be, might need additions. If it's bare land, then it might require actual plan to develop a shelter, which certainly would require fund development.
And in that, we're talking about specifically the Auburn area, I would personally encourage that we not exclude our search to just the unincorporated part of the Auburn area. I would include looking within the city limits also.
We are considering all options.
Speaking of that, is there any information that you have available now as it relates to Auburn's financial commitment potentially to this effort? Because that conversation has been nurtured.
Right Hand Auburn has approached the city council, and there is, they're potentially, they're having discussions, but at this point in time, there is no firm commitment. And if Right Hand Auburn would like to add more to that, I'd certainly invite them to come to the board.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'd like to hear that.
Very quickly, that is correct. We did appear before the city council, but it was erroneously scheduled as a non-action item. They, we just met yesterday, I think it was, with the city's staff, and I submitted a request. They asked me to give them a written request so that they can agendize us for the next available agenda item to consider our request for funding. That would be part of the contribution that shows on the charts that I think are Exhibits A and B in the board packet.
Thank you. And in that, my concern originally in voting to go forward with this temporarily way back earlier in this year, I commented on wanting to have as much data collection, even if it's anecdotal, to the fullest extent possible. So the first question there is, are you comfortable with the working relationship that we have at this point in time as it relates to interfacing our Department of HHS with this shelter in Auburn currently?
Yes, we have a good relationship with Volunteers of America. We actually send staff over from our Adult System of Care and also Human Services two nights a week. And so the goal there is to really identify people that could take advantage of some of our services, our mental health services, alcohol and drug services, and in terms of human services, identify people that perhaps are not receiving public assistance that might be eligible for public assistance and/or health insurance. So we're working to try to make that interface work well and get people signed up for benefits that they're eligible for.
Thanks. Another question, do you have any data or even anecdotal observations or opinion as it relates to? I am concerned about a center being a magnet, an attractor. I'm very concerned about the impact that potentially it may be having. Obviously, we had a problem before the shelter existed in North Auburn, in this neighborhood. Do you have any observations as to whether or not you think it's worse or better or the same? Obviously, if you closed it, there would be more people on the streets somewhere. Do you have any thoughts as to?
Well, I'll just comment in regards to my year and a half experience here in Placer County and working at the DeWitt Center. I think what makes this issue very complicated was, a few months ago, we had a homeless encampment out in the lawn area, and we had a significant number of people on the lawn. When the local anti-camping ordinance was passed, and those individuals moved on to other locations, the DeWitt Center, quite frankly, has seen a great reduction in the number of homeless individuals there. And in terms of individuals from the shelter, you know, in terms of the area where individuals were camping, there's not a great presence. There are a few individuals that certainly come out for the What Would Jesus Do feeding one morning a week. There's some people that make use of the picnic tables around our clinic, but the numbers have been greatly reduced since the encampment was terminated.
And any thoughts on, obviously, some of the behavior that I think is bothersome to all of us is literally criminal already. We don't have to change any ordinances, as with our no camping ordinance. And do you have any with beefed-up law enforcement? Obviously, that sounds like a silver bullet magic solution, but any experience or observations about how that might be a part of a solution if we specifically targeted the neighborhood that's been affected?
Well, I do know that the sheriff has assigned beat officer for the North Auburn area. They spend a fair amount of their time working with homeless individuals and transients. In terms of would things improve if they increased a police presence, can't comment on that.
Okay, thanks. You have answered all my questions. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you. Supervisor Montgomery?
Thank you. I wanted to touch on a couple of the same issues that Supervisor Wiegant raised. And just as a little bit of background, I've had a great conversation with a couple of representatives yesterday from the district attorney's offices about what tools we do and don't have in Placer County to address the issues of criminality and infractions and, you know, the things that may possibly not rise to the level of a crime, but are issues that we're all concerned about in North Auburn. And I got some information from him, because I've heard from a ton of people that we need ordinances, that we don't have the tools necessary to address the issues that people have absolutely rightly identified as ongoing problems in North Auburn. But I was, I wouldn't say surprised to discover, but it was, it was interesting to discover that under state law, under the penal code, the California State Penal Code, we already have rules to address, laws I should say, to address the specific things that people are concerned about. The penal code covers aggressive panhandling, it covers open containers, it covers public urination and defecation, it covers littering and dumping, so people who, you know, drop stuff all over the ground. And then it has this sort of general penal code section 370 for public nuisances, which says that anything which is injurious to health or indecent or offensive to the senses or an obstruction of the free use of property is arrestable and chargeable under California Penal Code. And so the feedback that I got, you know, from the district attorney's office was, yes, we could pass some ordinances that addressed all of these, but we actually have the tools right now to cite people, to arrest people, to charge people, and frankly, put people in jail, depending on what the offense is. And, you know, I'm still not convinced that we don't need to adopt ordinances. I think it's probably a good idea to have more tools for the tool belt, but I'm really struggling with the fact that if we adopt ordinances, it will actually change the relationship between Placer County Sheriff's Office and what they do and don't stop, cite, arrest people for. So I'm struggling with that. But I was reassured to discover that all of these issues that have been brought forward are already existing tools for the Placer County Sheriff's Office, the district attorney, and the judges who ultimately have to make these decisions. I wanted to just touch on a couple of things that some folks raised in comments that I think are really critically important to recognize, and that is, I have to put my glasses on because I was writing people's quotes down. I think it was Aaron who said that, you know, the people who are on the streets may not be the people in the shelter. And there were similar comments to that as well. And so I think we do need to try to differentiate between the shelter and the services that they're providing to the 47 people per night who can stay there versus this larger mass that we see out in our community that we all recognize is a problem. And again, this kind of got to my conversation yesterday with the district attorney's office, that there is this sequence of events and ways to deal with these things, from doing things like Supervisor Holmes has done, working with the Salvation Army to keep people out of homelessness, to keep them on the straight and narrow, through mental health counseling, through education, through domestic violence programs. But from my pers, you know, all the way through to the sheriff's office and the district attorney and the judge, putting people in jail. But I think that the shelter is part of that continuum, from prevention to, oh my God, you've really blown it, you're going to jail. The shelter has to be a part of that, because right now, if we don't offer shelter services, those 47 people will be on the street. And I think, you know, Dr. Marbit's words about, you know, a shelter that's not a 24/7 shelter, that Jim brought up, are quite rightly something that we should take into consideration. And I think to implement Dr. Marbit's recommendations, which we as a board adopted, we need to go to a 24/7 model that actually has opportunities for people to get the counseling, to get the medical care, to get the mental health care, to tie into SSI, to tie into veteran services. But if we're kicking them out on the street in the morning, they don't have the ability to get those services. So I get the concerns, and I recognize them, and I don't disagree that the concerns about the homeless and the transients that we see in North Auburn, they are real, they are valid. But the shelter has to be part of the solution that we all need to work together to identify, and that is identifying that permanent place, which is not the shelter at DeWitt. I don't think there's a single person on this board who thinks that the shelter at DeWitt is the long-term solution. It's not. I want it to be as short a term solution as possible. But the alternative, if we don't have it, is 47 more people on the street, and so I am going to be supporting the request today.
Supervisor Holmes, you wanted to?
Yeah, I have one more question. What happens after March 31st?
It depends on what action your board decides to take. So we will be coming back with a review of the shelter operations at that point in That if your board decides to extend the conditional use permit for another year, then it kicks in to affect some processes regarding rezoning the land, and I would defer to Ken Graham and Michael Johnson to provide more specifics regarding that.
But it'd be more, it would be a valid assumption that this organization will be backed for more money? You don't have to answer that.
Well, we included as attachments both a five-year or a five-month budget, but also an annual budget, so you could look at what an annualized cost would be at the same staffing
So just my final thoughts. First and foremost, thank you to everybody for taking the time out today to come out and talk with us about this issue. I appreciate both sides being represented and the way you represented your positions, with one minor exception, and that was going after Supervisor Holmes like that completely uncalled for. The, you know, the notion that at least we're doing something, government programs are replete with examples of government doing something for the sake of doing something and it being a complete failure. And we don't say, there's a problem, we must do something, this is something, so let's do it. We hopefully drill down, get at the heart of the matter, and come up with solutions that actually solve problems. And just because we have policy differences of opinion of how policies should be carried out doesn't mean that personally, the people with whom we disagree should be called into question, so it was disappointing. While we were, I gave you more than enough time to talk.
I apologize.
Okay. You can apologize to Supervisor Holmes after if you choose to do so. While we're sitting here listening to this, because I'm... While we're sitting here listening to this, because I, I like doing this, I don't know why, I wanted to dig into the numbers. My colleagues have to deal with this all the time. According to the U.S. Census 2015, 320 million Americans. According to the National Alliance to End Homelessness, 708, excuse me, 578,424 homeless Americans as of April of this year. That represents .0018% of the United States population is in homelessness. What's that mean in Placer County? 367,309 people in Placer County, again, as of the 15 census data, which, when you multiply that against the .0018, means that approximately, we could expect, all things being equal, approximately 663 homeless people in Placer County. Break that down further. City of Auburn, 13,446 people. The unincorporated Auburn area, according to Wikipedia, it was the best source I could find, another 13,000. That means that the city of Auburn and North Auburn represent 7% of the county's population. What 7% of 663 homeless people that we should have in this county approximately? 47. Exactly the number of people that's being asked for at this shelter, 47. Which leads us to a different issue, and that is the issue of everybody else that's not in the shelter. And clearly, I'm one that believes that all the conversations that we've had about the shelter has created an awful lot of the issues that we're dealing with, quite frankly. I think that word got out that Placer County is looking to do something, and so folks started coming here. And so, while we have an obligation, and I've said all along, I believe we have an obligation to meet the needs of those people who find themselves in this condition, homelessness, but have a desire to change. They want to get out of it. We have an obligation to help those people. But at the same time, we have an obligation to the people that we serve, the residents of the North Auburn area and the city of Auburn. And so, I am very much in favor of our board working, and our staff, working very closely with our sheriff's department, and our district attorney, and our probation folks, to say, all right, we want to help those people that want to help themselves. We want to provide an opportunity for these people to get out of this condition. But at the same time, we're not going to tolerate the destruction of the North Auburn area by people who have no interest in doing anything to help themselves or anybody around them. We're not going to tolerate this anymore. And so, what are we going to do to put an end to that? What are we going to do to address those people that are aggressively panhandling? My daughter, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, before homecoming down at Del Arlo, she and some friends wanted to go shopping to buy their stuff for Spirit Week. Where are you going to go? Oh, we're going to go to Target in Auburn. No, you're not. I wouldn't let my 15-year-old daughter come up here and shop. That's shocking. And it's unacceptable. And so, I want to separate the issues. I want to separate the issues from the shelter and the need that the shelter is going to provide, or, or, or the shelter is going to meet, and how we can work cooperatively with Leo and address some of these concerns that you've heard about, are people being checked? Because that was a big issue when it came before us. Are we getting proper controls? Do we know who these people are? Let's welcome in people to make sure that that's being met. So, let's address that shelter operation and make sure that it's being run as it's being represented. But at the same time, I think our board has an obligation to make a commitment to the community of North Auburn that we see what you've been subjected to, we don't accept it, we will not tolerate it, and we will work with our law enforcement folks to make sure that it gets cleaned up. At the same time, we're helping those people that do want to be helped in this kind of a, an environment. So, with that, Supervisor Holmes, I, I, it's, it's a tough situation for you. I, you, you live right here. This is your, this, that area is your backyard, and, and I don't begrudge you at all the concerns that, that you have expressed here. But I believe that meeting the need of those people that are hopefully going to be set on a path of getting out of homelessness, at the same time that we get the word out strong and loud, that we're not going to accept this kind of abuse of our community, hopefully those two things together will meet the need as we're seeing it represented in North Auburn. So, Supervisor Montgomery, your light was still on.
Yeah, I, I actually turned it back on because I was so impressed by your impassioned argument. I, I agree with you 100%, and that's really what I'm trying to get to in terms of that continuum that we're talking about. We really need to make sure that we put the resources where necessary appropriately. And I think giving resources to the shelter for the 47 people a night who are actually seeking to better themselves is critically important, but equally, if not more important, is giving the appropriate resources to our law enforcement community from the sheriff, you know, through the courts, to make sure that those folks who aren't choosing to engage in bettering themselves and their community have repercussions. So, thank you for saying that much more eloquently than I did. But I also wanted to just sort of take the pulse of my board. So, Red Hand Auburn is coming to us with a request. They're going to be going to the city of Auburn with a request. Obviously, none of us can speak for the city of Auburn, but I, I'm hesitant to make our commitment contingent upon the city of Auburn, but I somehow also want to communicate to the city of Auburn the extreme importance of their participation in the shelter. Because, you know, as I think Sandy pointed out, you know, there were folks who went to high school here, and grade school here, in the city of Auburn. And so, I want to just sort of take the temperature of my board and find out, is this an action that we would want to be contingent upon the city of Auburn participating, or we're just going to go strong-arm them every chance we get?
Let me, let Supervisor Duran answer first because he had his light lit, actually, before you asked the question. So, Supervisor Duran, if you had any additional comments, and then you wanted, care to address Supervisor Montgomery?
Yes, I did, and it was more along the lines of your discussion or, or your, your concern about the colorway question of the North Auburn area. And I would, I know that we can't take any action, but I would recommend that we accelerate some type of an action plan involving those branches of probation, sheriff, and, you know, everybody else in that particular area to come to us at some time in the future to kind of let us, show us how they would approach it, you know, to specifically focus on this particular issue. The second issue is that, you know, Jen, it, it's always nice to try to, you know, condition things, but, you know, Auburn is, is their own government, and they, you know, they either recognize the problem or they don't. One thing that I will tell you is that I've gotten calls from folks up in Nevada County that are impressed at the work that we're doing here and trying to address it. I've been contacted by folks in Utah. Salt Lake is going through a, a, a huge problem with this. And all I'm saying is that we need to take, we need to not rely on what other people do, and we need to move forward, and it's, and we need to take the lead on this. And, you know, we need to plow, plow it, you know, it, that's, that's how I view my obligation. I, my heart goes out to Jim, I know this is his area, he's getting beat up constantly, but, you know, that's kind of how I feel about that. And, and I know, Jim, if there's any solace, when the, when the questions come up to what's going down in, in the city of Roseville, I'm going to be in the same spot that you are, brother. That's just the fact, and that just comes with the job. So, I, I do, I do appreciate your, your tolerance of a lot of stuff that's been thrown at you. But again, I do feel it's something that needs to be addressed in the best way possible, focused, surgical, and, and, and address it. Again, the future, I'm not worried about, I'm worried about this moment, but I'm more worried about 10, 15 years down the road if we don't get a handle on starting to address the issue. I don't want to be like Santa, Santa Clara County. I don't want to be like San Jose, spending $100 million a year, out of their budget, your money, addressing this problem. I want to see our numbers go down from the $25 million that we're already spending across the county on just those 542 people that we have in the county that are, that are, that are homeless, whether it be their low-level or chronic. I want to see that number go down, and I want that money to go back to the programs that you deserve. More fire, more police, more quicker responses. That's what I, you know, and, and to, to go out there, yeah, it, it takes, it takes something to do it, but, so, you know, we all have to draw a line in the sand and say, what are we going to do?
Supervisor Weigant?
Yeah, a couple, a couple of reactions. So, one way to answer your question, I'd agree with Supervisor Duran as it relates to conditioning and approval, but, you know, if there are three votes to support this notion that expires March 31st, and Auburn ought to be aware of that. And I think, as I've said all along, I'm interested in a holistic, long-term solution, which includes site selection. And Kirk, I want to give you a huge compliments for your delivery and the passion by which you made the comment about, my words would be having a zero tolerance for the kind of behavior that is represented in these photographs. So, if we go down the road of supporting this temporary solution, I, I want us to continue to build on the relationship that we have already in terms of it being the optimum solution. A vision would be that we're doing the most that we can to help people who want to no longer be homeless and have all of our resources address that. But I want us to have a zero tolerance for the other folks. Unfortunately, in Placer County, we have resources. Whereas on one hand, we don't want to, in an era of realignment, beef up all of our law enforcement and court efforts with menial crimes. At the same time, I see this as being a critical component to a strategy that actually would be affordable. So, those are my thoughts as it related to this question.
And Supervisor Holmes, you have some final thoughts here?
Oh, yeah, just regarding the participation of the city of Auburn. If this board takes action today, why would they want to even say, well, you solved the problem, they wouldn't need to, they wouldn't need to participate?
Okay. All right. All that having been said, we need a motion if our board is to do anything on this item. So, what's the pleasure?
I'll motion to adopt a program in the amount that the Red Hand Auburn is requesting for, for shelter services.
I'll second that. Would you amend your motion to include our direction regarding more targeted public safety?
Absolutely.
Thank you. That case I second.
Okay. So, what, what I'm going to ask is that, is that we have staff, and I think David clearly heard the conversation our board had, we have staff get together with sheriff's department, district attorney's office, probation, and begin working on a plan to come back quickly to our board, should there be a need for, whether it be additional resources, what have you. I would hope that in the short term, they could, they could work on increasing patrols in that area. I mean, let's face it, Placer County's done a very good job of making it very well-known. You don't get a DUI in Placer County. We prosecute these things, and we prosecute down to .08s and, you know, so, a lot of folks know, you just don't screw around like that in Placer County. Well, we need to develop the same kind of message amongst these folks that, that want to disregard our laws and, and our sense of community this way. So, I'd like to see, you know, us get working on that sooner rather than later, and if, if there's anything that is requested by way of any kind of a augment to budget in order to facilitate this, let's try to get that back to the board sooner rather than later again. Okay?
Mr. Chair, could I just, one comment, mostly to staff. You know, if there are three votes for this, it's a pilot that'll extend through March. My view, that's actually adequate time to, to do a focus on a site selection. I don't think our partners are married to the particular site. We want to find the best site. I think we have some great resources for looking at that in, in an optimum way, and have other hurdles like rezoning follow that, not have that be a driver. So, I want to have lead time to make sure that we can actually completely make a change in strategy by March, if in fact it appears that there's some clear, some clarity to these things out there.
And as chairman next year, you'll have the ability to schedule a hearing on the item maybe as early as January, in order to make sure that by March we've had that conversation. Okay, so we have, I, I just want to be clear, the request before us is for both the contractual agreement and the county's contribution of the approximately $225,000, but also for $40,000 for the construction costs. You mentioned the service. I want to be clear that we are also including, okay? And that we approve the modifications to the site agreement to reflect the actions taken by the board. Okay. Roll call, boys.
Duran?
Yes.
Weigant?
Yes.
Holmes?
No.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Euler?
Aye. Okay. Thank you all very much for your time today. And our board does have a number of closed session items that we did not take up this morning, so at this time, county council will go ahead and take us into closed session.
The board will re-adjourn to closed session to discuss three items of litigation and public employee appointment.
Thank you. Thank you. You will let us know when you're ready?
Ready.
All right. Board has returned from closed session. County Council will provide a report.
Board has returned from closed session where they discussed the items listed on the closed session agenda. In Morgan Marie Gomez versus Nick Boone et al., the board heard a report and authorized a defense and indemnity of the two individual county employees and waived the conflict to allow the County Council's office to represent the county and the individual employees. The board did not discuss B, the Tovar versus county case. Item C, Timothy Harrison, a worker's compensation claim, the board heard a report from council and gave direction to council. Anticipated litigation, the board had previously handled that in the morning. On the supplemental agenda, there was a case of Aki versus County of Placer. The board heard a report from council and gave direction to council. And on the public employee appointment, the board confirmed the appointment of Lori Walsh as the Director of Human Resources. That concludes the closed session report.
Thank you. There being no other items before the board on October 6th, we're adjourned until our meeting in Tahoe on October 20th.